... and off and running so that our meetings are accessible for folks. We appreciate that. Um, I'd like to just run through what's on our agenda before I officially call the meeting to order so that we can all be on the same page. This evening, we have two presentations. We have one that is the, uh, regular quarterly update from Mayor Cahill and the city administration. This is something that, uh, this city council has begun inviting, requesting of the mayor. And so this is a regular quarterly update. Um, so we look forward to that. Then we've got Tim Flaherty, Director of the Greater Beverly Y and former Beverly City Councilor. Nice to have you back, Tim, um, here in the chamber with us. And we've got a presentation from the Y on the McPherson Youth Center and things that are happening there. So I see that you've got other members of your team and we'll look forward to hearing from all of you. Thank you so much. We've got, uh, one resident speaker signed up to speak, and then we have three public hearings beginning at eight P M. We'll take those at the times that they are posted. We have some routine city business to take care of as well. We'll take a brief break for some subcommittee work and we'll come back and finish it all up. So with that, I'll officially call to order this regular meeting of the Beverly City Council Monday, October twentieth, twenty twenty-five, seven o'clock P M. Ms. Kent, will you please call the roll?
Bowen?
Here.
Crowley?
Here.
Feldman?
Here.
Housman?
Here.
Rotundo?
Here.
Spang?
Here.
St. Hilaire?
Here.
Sweeney?
Here.
And Flowers?
Here. Thank you, Ms. Kent. Counselor Bowen, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
The pledge of allegiance should apply. United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Counselor Bowen. We can go right to presentations at the top of the agenda. And I don't know, I think I saw the mayor in the hall. All right, we'll see if he's ready to roll. Is Kelsey Litka here? That's our resident speaker who's signed up to speak. Okay. I'll just mention, um, Kelsey may yet be coming because might have been expecting some presentations. I'll just mention, as I usually do, that those public comment spots, um, for residents to sign up to speak are available at all of our regular meetings of the city council. And they can be signed up for. There are five total spots, three minutes each at any regular meeting. Sign up for by contacting the city clerk's office no later than nine thirty A M., the morning of the meeting. And they are first come, first served. And, uh, speakers have three minutes to address the council, should they be signed up for that. So we'll, we'll hold and see if Kelsey joins us a little bit later in the meeting. Mayor Cahill, thank you for being here with us. Um, we'd be happy to, when you're, when you're ready here, we'd be happy to go to you and have the, the floor turned over for your quarterly update. And thank you so much.
Sorry to make the Y wait. Hi, everybody. Great to see you all. It's going to be me and it's going to be Ibrahim tonight. When we tried to do this on the sixth and we get a little sideways with, um, understanding us getting the right information, uh, to the clerk's office and the posting, we had more people available. But I think, I think, um, I think you'll see the information you need and we can certainly have a conversation after. You're gonna do it from there, you got it? Okay, great. All right. So we're just gonna run through, um, where we're at on numerous projects. Okay, youth center. You know it's under construction. Uh, you know that the, the, uh, project is being paid for largely with ARPA funds and in addition to that with a million dollar earmark that Congressman Moulton secured for us a couple of years ago. Um, you can see, if you drive by, that the work is progressing very well at this point. Um, and the expectation is it'll be finished in, I should say, open to the, to the, the young folks February-ish. I say that, it could be January, February, March, but that's thing, things are progressing well. And fortunately, in the meantime, we've got great space for them. And I probably said this before, but I probably should say again that, you know, Counselor Rotundo was always kind of the most valuable person when it comes to fighting for, uh, from, you know, from our perspective for the, uh, our youth who use the McPherson Youth Center and working with our partners at the Y. So they're in a good space for now and we're excited to get them into their, you know, long-term home, uh, soon. City Hall project, um, we are in design document, uh, phase of the work, uh, the work that has been done to date and until we bring forward to you a proposal and a request for the, um, for the total project budget, the work that's being done now is all being paid for by money that the city council's already appropriated. Um, and so we brought on W T Rich's Construction Management Firm this summer. You may remember them, they built the police station with us, uh, and they, they really stood out going through the process of, of hiring a construction manager at risk. As I said, we'll be back before you, hopefully before the end of the calendar year, um, looking for approval to move into the construction phase. At present, it's looking timing-wise like if there's approval late in calendar year, we'd likely be leaving this building by summer, uh, to start the construction work, which is, it says eighteen to twenty-four month. I would say to, yeah, I would say to you that everyone's looking at a tighter window than that. Um, and, and I think W T Rich has demonstrated that they can get work done, um, at a high quality and, and efficiently. So, uh, we're, we're all looking for to be, to be at the lower end of that number, uh, when it comes to that, when it comes to being out of the building and be able to come back in. And, uh, if, you know, we've talked about this piece before as well. We hope that, uh, again, this all, this all, you know, only becomes more than a conversation if and when you folks approve the project budget. But assuming that we're there, um, we very much want city operations to stay in the downtown. We have some ideas. We will need to go through an R F P process, you know, compliant with state law, and we couldn't even start that process until we had a vote from you folks on the project budget. So it all kind of awaits that, that action. Next. Fire station project, um, you can see the construction was completed this summer on the whole building envelope, new roof, windows, doors, insulation and repointing, uh, the electrical, mechanical work, the HVAC. We have brought onboard a contractor, all the materials have been ordered. Uh, we're expecting delivery on, on quite a bit of that, uh, those materials by the end of this month, and, and here we are coming close to that. So we hope to see them really in the next week to two weeks. One of the features, not the only thing, but one of the features of the project is that we will be bringing air source heat and cooling pumps to the building. Um, and that will, that will greatly improve the indoor, um, the indoor environment there with an anticipated completion during the winter of this coming year. And, and that is all pursuant to the monies that have already been appropriated by the council. The library project, um, there are a lot of words here, let's just look at them together. Um, we've had to work very hard to determine with a, um, with roughly two point two million dollars to work with, um, what we can achieve. And so we look, we've got, um, well, rather than reading through all this, what, what we know is that, um, we had to do some real value engineering to determine what we, what we can accomplish here. Um, and we will be bringing some new equipment in to replace, um, the rooftop units and what supports them, both on the roof and in the building. Uh, we're gonna be doing some, uh, as much as we can, some insulation work. But at the end of the day, what we, what we know, we have is a nineteen thirteen building that was built incredibly well and a mid-nineties addition that was not built so well and was not kind of meshed with the original building well. So it's a building that has a lot of air coming in and air going out at all times of year. So we'll be doing some, um, in addition to replacing those pieces of equipment, we'll be doing as much, um, insulation work as the, the budget allows. So when we make our determinations of, just because when we bid this, we had the definite work and then the, the alternative add-ons. Um, and so as we get the guaranteed maximum price from the construction management firm, which is Consigly, we'll determine whether we're able to do additional, uh, insulation or not. Uh, but we'll get started, looks, looks to be around about the middle of November. And we've been working closely with the library leadership, uh, significantly Allison and, and her assistant. And, um, you know, it'll be, uh, it'll be a, a project that's largely well there open. There may be a couple of, uh, short duration pieces of work, for example, one given day or half a day when some of the heavy work's going on. But for the most part, they'll be able to be open and, and operational to, to all folks who use the library. Um, and as you can see, once the work starts, between twelve and twenty-four weeks of construction, that feels like a fairly wide, but it's, but it's really still in weeks, not months. So we'll be working, as you can see, before winter and through the winter, uh, to get this project completed. And it should give us a, a significantly improved performance, um, which we're, we're very confident of. This is a small project, but you folks approved the funding for it, uh, back in the spring. The fuel island at D P W, it should say D P S, Department of Public Services, um, we had to replace the pump island and the tanks, one tank for diesel fuel, one tank for gas. Uh, and that project has been, you know, as you can see, the island's complete, the tank's installed and the hoop would be operational soon. Next. Water meter replacement, this is a very big project, which you, you folks know well and the community has heard about. Fifty percent of the needed meters, we went through this together in the spring. With tariffs looming, we had an ability to buy a certain amount of the, of the meters to try to save some money, and that saved us about forty thousand dollars, uh, by avoiding tariff charges on those. We've got fifteen meters installed as a quote kickoff pilot, which the, uh, the engineering team and our, and our outside, uh, partners thought was, or know was really important so they could test the system, communications installation, et cetera. And as a result of, of testing and feedback on those fifteen meters, we've figured out some things that, you know, will make the rollout more effective. Uh, the rollout, as you can see, is anticipated in late October and we're there. So we should see that starting in the next week to two weeks. Uh, project duration of roughly a year and a half to get every water meter in the city, uh, replaced. I will say, one question has come up at different times and it's been, hey, if my water meter is no longer working and I'm having to make do with, um, with estimated billing on the quarterly billing, can I get mine done first? And as you can imagine, with every neighborhood in the city needing to be done, it doesn't really work for the contractors to bounce from here to here to here to here. They'll, they'll be, well, you can, you can, oh, that's a different project already. Let's go back. Thanks. Sorry. What we know is each neighborhood, when they get to a new neighborhood, they'll be looking first within the neighborhood at those who've been dealing with, uh, meters that no longer function. So they'll, they'll be first in line when the, when the team is in their neighborhood. So that project, it's exciting. I think, I think we're gonna, we're gonna, all going to be happy with the outcome. I think, uh, you know, our, we and everybody we represent should really, um, benefit from the ability to, um, create an account, go online, set some alarms, you know, have, have, um, have access on a regular basis to just what you're using for water and have an ability to catch quickly any type of, of problem in your home that might be causing, um, more water usage than is normal. So that's an exciting feature of it as well. Thank you. The Bridge Street project. The great thing about this project, two things. One, we, we applied to the state. It was about eight years ago. Uh, when I first came into office, the Route One A project was the first tip project that we did. Uh, and that was, when I say tip, I think you all understand, but this is for others watching, the state's transportation improvement plan or program, that is where you go for larger cost projects. Now, this project is about sixteen million dollars in construction. We, as a, as a small, uh, city, could not, could not make that happen. So the way things work with tip generally is the community pays for engineering work and then engineering and design, and then the state pays for construction. So the Bridge Street project, as I said, is about a sixteen million dollar construction project. It follows on the heels of the Route One A project that started down by the harbor front, the length of Rantool and then left on Cabot out past Dairy Queen to the, to the train crossing there. After that project, we were able to get onto the tip for the Three Intersections project, and that's to, that rebuilt the intersection at Henry's or Crosby's. It signaledized for the first time the intersection in front of the golf and tennis, um, where Balch and McKay meet. And then it rebuilt the intersection down at the bottom of Cabot and Rantool at the harbor front. All great outcomes. And then this was the next project. It's a big one. It took some time to get through the process, but fortunately for us and for our community, we were able to get it kicked off. It was never planned this way. It was, we were pushing to get it done as quickly as we could, but it timed up that Bridge Street work has been able to been, to be done while the, um, the Hall Whittaker Bridge has been out of, out of service. So the, the project itself, in the contract, the construction team has until May twenty twenty-seven to complete the project. They are essentially complete from the Danvers Line to Folgerav. Uh, what really remains is the tree planting and the trees are out there and they're, they're in the process of planting. Um, so that's all completed and here we are in fall of two thousand twenty-five. It's a great outcome. Um, I know along the way, I think it was challenging at times for sure for neighbors. I don't want to downplay that in the least and, and, and I don't mean to continually shout out the word one counselor, but Counselor Rotundo, uh, had a great opportunity to partner with, with our engineering team and with Mast Dot and was, was really every day on the ground helping the, the community to, to get through that project. So we're in a very good place there. What remains on that project is a result of the, um, the Hall Whittaker Bridge and the temporary bridge, uh, construction, because what remains is downtown side of the bridge, Margin Street to Water Street and a new traffic signal and rebuild of that intersection. You know that the equipment for the signal is up, uh, but that the rea, the reason that we're waiting still on rebuilding that intersection is that our favorite high transmission electric line project is not done yet, right? National Grid's, uh, one fifteen K V project still isn't complete, even though a lot of, a lot of parts of the route have been able to get to final, uh, repaving and all. Uh, but until they're able to take the old line out of River Street and McPherson Street, then they won't be out of the way for the intersection work to be done. So that's, that's on pause. Uh, but as I said, the rest of Bridge Street is complete and it, and it looks fantastic. Next. And now on our, on our own paving this year, uh, when you look at the one fifteen K V route, when you look at our, uh, paving program, um, and then some other things that we've been able to work with, uh, with Mast Dot to do, we're well over forty streets that are being repaved this year, a lot of them, um, a lot of them getting completely new sidewalks, all of them getting ADA compliant, uh, cross crossings at, at all the side streets and across the main streets where needed. Um, so there's a, there's a lot that has happened. It's been a really busy year. I mean, you can see what's up there. So we'll just give you a, a minute to give it a look. Um, I will say that with, with a large part of the one fifteen K V line streets having been completed and some adjacent streets, um, the one thing that remains for us is to finish replacing the water main on, on East Lothrup. And that's, that's a project that when, when the one fifteen K V, K V project started, Commissioner Collins raised his hand and said, the water, water main under East Lothrup is old. We need to replace it. We don't want to cut into the street in three years, five years, eight years, now's the time. Uh, so that project is at a point where Commissioner is hoping that will be done through Bissen Street by the end of next week, which would be the end of October, and able to then lay temporary, um, above groundwater for the stretch from Bissen to, to traffic lights, um, right immediately falling on that. So the goal is to get it all done and paved still this fall, and I think we're on track. Let's see. The only other, the only other highlights I think I want to give you for the, for the, the overall number of streets that have been paved and the work being done. One is that we've built some sidewalks where sidewalks have not existed. Uh, and that's a hard process. There's a reason they don't exist. And so, and in some instances, it's because they're old cow paths that far preceded, you know, motor vehicles. Uh, and it's really hard to figure out how to, how to lay them out, how to install them. Uh, but we, you know, last year we built the sidewalk along Lake Shore Ave. My first term in office, we built the sidewalk along Coal Street, which had never had one. Uh, so, you know, we figured out how to do some of this, uh, and you can see now that the cross lane sidewalk is currently under construction. Uh, this past year, we were able to put a sidewalk on Boyle Street from Chapman's Corner as far as Village Lane, have yet to figure out how to do it between Village Lane and Tall Tree Drive. There's so little to work with in terms of right of way. But with your support, we, we brought on V H P to do some work in evaluating how to do that, uh, how to do a sidewalk from Tall Tree on Boils, turning the corner, getting to the train crossing at, um, at Boils and Coal Street. And we're hopeful that we're gonna be able to do that. Um, we've got a layout, we're working with some property owners about rights of way and trying to make some, some progress. And as you can see, cross lane is largely, um, laid out and some of it already, um, already built, and that still needs some pieces put together. Um, and Counselor Feldman, we are still gonna get to Tozer, um, from Dodge to the train crossing, and that's on track for the spring. Um, and so, and then it's a, it'll be a longer challenge to get M B T A approvals to extend that cro, that sidewalk across the train crossing and to the back of the, the Kinsman neighborhood, right? The Wald, the Walden Kinsman neighborhood, but that's something that we, you know, we can go after. In addition to all these streets, we've worked closely with Mass Department of Transportation on other, uh, state numbered routes in the city. And Counselor St. Hilaire, we did some work together and, and were able to get Mast Dot to pave pretty much everything from, um, a Point and Pride's Crossing up to the Manchester Line over the last year plus. Um, so that was an important one. And now we've gotten a commitment from Mast Dot to repave from the Vietnam Veterans Memorial at Ellis Square up Essex as far as Gardener Street where Woodbury's is with sidewalk work that we're doing. Uh, so the city's doing the sidewalk work from there to Newberry and beyond. Newberry sidewalks are newer, um, and in good shape. The Mast Dot paving on that is going to take late, take place late next spring because we'll need to continue to do as much sidewalk work as we can get done this fall and do a little more of that in the spring, as well as some, uh, additional water work to prepare for Mast Dot to come in and do their piece. Anyway, there's a lot there. Let's go to the next, if you would, Ibrahim. Thank you. This is the, the list of twenty twenty-six paving, and that assumes that we are able to, assumes we receive roughly the same amount from the state as we've done this year from a combination of chapter ninety and fair share, um, uh, fair share tax money. Um, and then that we're able to go to free cash for the amount that we've appropriated in each of the last couple of years. So with that as a caveat, that list would be doable next year. Let's see. Milbrook Road and Sonning Road, we've been in process throughout this year with the neighbors because those are two of the almost two hundred streets that have some parts to all of them that are not officially accepted as public ways. So that's the process you learned about with us over the last year. Plus, we did it in the Thaxton neighborhood and we're doing it in these neighborhoods where the neighbors don't realize, but they actually own to the center line. And since they aren't neighborhoods that have ever chosen to or wanted to be private ways, we, we work with them and they generally are happy to, uh, to find out that they don't, they're not, once they find out they own to the center line, which most of them don't know, they're then happy to find out we're not asking them to rebuild the sidewalks or repave the street, but they're able to donate a permanent maintenance easement to the city. And that's the process we're hoping to work with moving forward, street by street, as we, as we, uh, prepare to resurface the streets that are not fully, uh, publicly accepted. So those are the two that jump out in that, in that category here. Uh, the next slide is, oh, we secured a grant from Mast Dot that they, um, they made available last fall to communities with a very quick turnaround. Um, and it was to, it was to, you know, buy and install rapid flashing beacons to improve safety for everybody, uh, certainly for pedestrians, bicyclists, uh, one-wheel riders, scooter riders, whatever somebody's on, um, and, and certainly help motorists as well. And so you can see that we submitted for that grant, got approved for, uh, rapid flashing beacons at five intersections around the city. Those just arrived yesterday and today, all the equipment. Uh, our electrician team is building out, um, the, the beacons and then we're gonna install and make operational. So the order that they're willing, we hope that they'll all get installed, you know, over the course of a, a couple few days. Um, they first need to be all assembled at the, at the DPS shop. So my hope is over the next couple of weeks, those will get installed and they'll become operational. Uh, and I think the, you know, it'll make the first three are adjacent to schools and they're important, uh, places where kids walking to school will cross at the high school, um, along Grimble Ave, students going to and from Hannah School, and then at Dodge and Putnam, students going to and from North Beverly. And then the other two are really neighborhood cross, crosswalks that are highly used. The Essex Street one is the way people can walk to and from Richdale. And then the K Street one, it says near Sturdivan Street, there's a playground on Sturdivan. Um, the sightlines are not sufficient to be safe to put it right at Sturdivan. It's as close to Sturdivan as we could place it so that there's still, whoops, still good sightlines for the motorists when they, when the thing is activated, when the beacon's activated. Is that it? Oh, last one. This is not a, a city project, that's why I put it last. The good thing is we had an update from Mast Dot just about ten days ago. Um, you know, we all have lived this together when Mast Dot came to the city in, in, in June of twenty-two and told us that overnight the Hall Whittaker Bridge had to close forever. Um, the state had let it go. Inspections said it was worse than they thought it was and, and there we are. So we've been working collectively to push and push and push and get a process that we were originally told was going to take way too long, some type of movement. So we've had a lot of help from the Healy Driscoll Administration. We've worked closely with state agencies and federal agencies, and there are, I think, about seven such agencies involved with four permits for each of these bridges. They've really a three, three bridge project because the state needs to permanently replace both the Hall Whittaker and the Kernwood. And the state decided that we needed to first build a temporary Hall Whittaker because frankly, they were so afraid and are so afraid that the Kernwood won't last, that the way they laid it out to us, right? Because we've had a lot of discussion in the community about this, we could get a temporary bridge, bridge, uh, design permitted and built in about three to four years where a permanent bridge is gonna take six to seven, and that difference for the state made it worth spending the extra money to build a temporary. So that, that's a Mast Dot decision. We've been running with them with it ever since they made that decision. Um, and so the great news in the moment is that they've started construction on the temporary bridge. By starting, I mean they've done some, uh, pruning and taking down of trees that are in the way of the equipment they need to build, and they've done, uh, installing of the erosion controls. Their plan is to have on site in the next couple of weeks, the big crane they'll need to drive the piles, um, uh, that'll be footings for the temporary bridge. So we'll start to see real activity, uh, very soon. I mean, as I said, they're on site too, so there is activity. Um, the goal, the contract that was signed by the company that is, um, building the temporary bridge has them saying summer to fall of two thousand twenty-seven, but in our meetings and conversations with them, we are all on the same page of trying to push that schedule and trying to get that bridge up and operational for the neighborhood, for the community, well in advance of, of what they're allowed in their contract, similar to how, uh, Newport has been able to beat timelines by a significant amount, significant amount on the Bridge Street project. I think that's probably all I need to say right there. And I'm gonna turn it to Ibrahim, who's gonna touch on Obear Park, Lynch Park, and then a, a, a quick sharing on the municipal aggregation results. Ibrahim? Thanks.
Everybody, Ibrahim Lopez Hernandez, Sustainability Office. Um, so quick updates on the coastal resiliency projects that the Sustainability Office is managing right now. Obear Park, um, one of the things that were completed from the last time an update was given is that an ecological restoration area or nomo zone was instituted. So if you've been to Obear Park recently, you know that there's some signage and chain link, and that's so that grasses can grow and the erosion is stopped in the meantime. And then we also got from the state an environmental notification form, which is the first step in the state permitting process to be able to move to construction. Um, in progress right now is an archaeological survey that we got required to do by the Massachusetts Historical Commission. Um, there were some artifacts found and right now a, um, report is being compiled so that the Mass Historical Commission can review it, and then we can keep moving forward into the second point, which is, uh, the, uh, E I R or the Environmental Impact Report. So once that archaeological survey report is done and it's vetted, then we will be moving the packet to finalize that, uh, MIPA permitting. So we're looking at, at around December of this year for that packet to be ready for submittal, um, to finish that first point in the environmental permitting. The second one on Lynch Park is that we secured C P C funding, uh, for the seawall and carriage house designs. We've been working on those two, particularly the Lynch Beach Seawall, which is right next to the to the Rose Garden, which was the very badly affected area of the park with the pictures and one of the recent winter storms. Currently, we're reviewing alternatives for how to protect the carriage house in place using the seawall, which is part of its foundations. And in the Lynch Beach Seawall design side, um, we have been tailoring the design so that it is more resilient, so that the water doesn't get to the cat, to the Rose Garden as easily and as, as fast as it has been getting into, as well as redesigning the ramp so it's ADA accessible and people can still go down to the water. And we are expecting the packet to start that, uh, state permitting by January 2025. That is our timeline. And those are all the slides.
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Lopez Hernandez as well. Councilors, um-
I think he's, he just wants to hit quickly on the-
Oh, sure.
The, an update on the community, the municipal aggregation program, which is running through about January, right?
Okay. Yeah. So, um, as you all know, uh, the city has been doing an aggregation program for the past three-plus years that was in review by the state and has been in place since the summer of 2024, since June. That, uh, aggregation program has been running up until December, early January, that is when the contract ends. We have been getting data from our consultant into how the program has been performing. And this is a snippet of the data that we've been combing through where we're showing here the residential accounts, which are the bulk of the account holders, the customers, the electricity customers in Beverly. And what we have until May, which is the most recent data that we have, is that we have saved folks around 1.546 million dollars, um, right now, um, with, between the three products that we have in place. Um, the next one is we've also saved, uh, in terms of environmental benefits, um, an additional 3,000, almost 3,100 metric tons of CO2, um, avoided. Um, so that would be about 736 gasoline-powered vehicles for a year, 3.8 million pounds of coal burned, 670 households' annual electricity use, or almost 380,000 gallons of, uh, gasoline that we've been able to avoid because of the additional renewable energy content in our, um, program products. And in terms of the savings, um, throughout time, here is a graph where the black line and dots go until May. We have saved people around 1.6, almost 1.7 million dollars. If we're expecting that same amount of consumption and the same amount of, uh, customers, we are expecting around 2 million to 2.5 million by the end of the contract in terms of total savings, uh, for the city and for the customers. Um, so that's more or less our ballpark right now with the numbers that we've been seeing. And that's all.
Madam President, I'll just say one more thing. The municipal aggregation, as we, as we understand, and I just want to make sure other people do, saves, it has saved us money on our electric supply portion of our own electric bills, right? There's supply and there's distribution. I think sadly, electric bills are going up everywhere, um, but we've been saving on the supply side through this aggregation, even though each one of us as customers have to pay the other part of it too. I just want to flag that in case somebody says, well, my bill's gone up. If you save me money, how has it still gone up? There's a lot that goes into that bill. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, thank you both for the presentation update. Um, we appreciate your time, the slides, the update. Um, it's very helpful. And councilors, we have some time for questions. I do want to make sure that we also get to hear from the Y before our eight o'clock hearing, so, um, we may not get to every question that councilors have. I'm sure that the mayor and his team would be happy to answer questions by email or, or come back and cycle back to us as well. But are there questions, um, for us to take a few on the floor now? Anyone have a question or comment? Counselor Sweeney?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mayor Cahill, for the presentation. Uh, the two questions I have are related to, first, to the ongoing project, the McPherson Youth Center. At this point, are you anticipating the project to be on budget, or is there going to be a need to utilize some contingency funding?
Well, the, when you say on budget, contingencies are built into the budget. So, you know, I, my, at this point, it looks like we'll be using contingency funds and, and the expectation is we won't need to go to be, go beyond them. Certainly that what we're driving towards.
And I ask, is the, the conversation last year about that funding coming from the vehicle line? So there's an expectation that some of that funding from the line will need to be utilized?
Yes, yes. I think it's, that's become clear. Go ahead, sorry.
But not beyond that amount at this point?
That's what we're pushing. That's what we're pushing. Uh, yes.
All right, that's helpful. Um, thank you for that, Mayor. And then on City Hall, the last update, I think we had something around the ballpark of a $27 million project. Is that still the anticipated cost at this point in time?
I'd say at this point, we're still hearing from the construction management team who, as I said, they came, they came on board late summer, and so they familiarize themselves with the design documents, they bring in a cost estimator, and there's a reconciliation currently underway between cost estimates from the architectural team and cost estimates from the, uh, construction management team. So we don't have the reconciliation of those yet to look at. That's part of the work that is still ongoing, that has us hoping to be in front of you folks by December. Um, if those numbers don't land where we feel we need them to, then we'll go back at value engineering. Value engineering is the term they use in the, in this field for cutting things out of the project.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. And so if I understand you, there's, isn't, at this point, there's still a goal to stay within that 25 to 27 million dollar range, whether that's through value, value engineering or not, before something's brought forward to the city council?
Yes, our goal is to come in with the lowest price tag we can, uh, while we deliver on the needs of the departments and the public to, to make the building what it needs to be.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Can I say something without being asked the next question? I thought you'd ask it right away. The historical piece on Ober, when you're looking to just get through the project, you really don't want to hear that Mass Historical is going to come in, but they found some 5,000-year-old artifacts. It, it, you know, it had been, you know, um, investigated prior, some, what about a generation ago, Ibrahim? Uh, and so the hope is still that it, you know, that what was found and where it was found isn't going to get in the way of the work we're trying to do, uh, but we're, we're waiting on that.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Bowen?
Thank you. Um, I think we got at least a tidbit on almost all the projects I had on my list. Um, one comment, I think we talked the last time we got one of these updates about potentially getting some of the slides in advance, um, to be able to use more of this time for questions or clarifications or things. Um, I think that, that would be great going forward. Um, and I'm wondering if the engineering department is able to provide the monthly updates again, or, or where, sort of where project management software status is for the, the frequency of, of updates on projects? Because we've, we've gone a bunch of different routes over time, so.
I'm going to re-watch this question that you just posed with, uh, with the engineering team to, in tomorrow or sometime this week, because I, I want to answer you comprehensively because there's a lot there. Uh, the one thing on, in terms of how far in advance of presenting, we can share information with you. We can definitely do that. Some, some of it is, is moving in, in, in terms of, you know, projects are underway in a matter of a week, a couple of weeks. As, as long as, if we put stuff in front of you too far ahead of the meeting, as long as you will give us some grace that things may look different by the time, you know, we're up here, which, which, and I think that makes good sense too, you know, to, to help you folks be ready to, um, to dig in a little more. Yep, that makes sense. Thanks.
And if I may, um, I think the one piece that could be helpful still for an update is the Family Dollar Building. There was a community meeting. It sounded like the next step coming out of that will be a group to put together an RFP, that that could be as early as the end of this year. So given that it, it may be before the next quarterly update, just wanted to see if, if there's something we can share about where people can weigh in on where those ideas-
Yes. Um, no, it's a great point. Um, our hope is to, is to sit back down in a community setting like we did the first time, um, sometime in the next month, a month and a half. Um, Counselor Spang offered to write the RFP. I'm sorry, offered to be part of, of, of trying to figure out what goes in an RFP. And I think that, I think that's a really important piece is to have some process around, uh, around that and then come back to, to some more conversation. Um, so I think that, if that makes sense, as you folks are hearing it, that's, I think that's in order of, of doing things and, and, and nothing would be fully decided, certainly what's, you know, the, the idea of maybe, uh, bringing back to the community some alternatives of how an RFP, you know, what could be prioritized, prioritized in an RFP. So let me say this. Um, Counselor Spang is involved because she asked to be for sure. Obviously, some members of our administration and anybody who was at that meeting or wasn't able to be at that meeting, who wants to raise their hand and, you know, and, and try to help dig into those details, I'd invite that, ask them to let you folks know through you, or just, you know, reach out to me or my office directly. I think we have a, you know, small ad hoc group that's not too big, but has, you know, sufficient brain power at the table. Let's see where we can get.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Hausmann, maybe we'll go to you and then we'll pause this conversation. We certainly, all of these will be ongoing conversations, but we'll pause with our thanks to you, Mayor, and we'll, we'll move to the Y's presentation as well.
Yeah, I just have, uh, sort of one question. It really has to do with the water main work on Lothrup Street. Um, you know, I was talking with the construction crew that's doing the work. They were not quite as optimistic, I guess, in projecting what you have mentioned this evening. Uh, so I'm very glad to hear you think the section all the way to Hale Street will be done. Um, certainly through Bissen seems to be, everyone agrees that will happen. But as you're going forward between Bissen and Hale, right now, uh, Lothrup Street is a total gravelly mess, and, uh, I wonder whether there will be any effort to do some kind of low-level paving or something to control what's going on in that section between, say, the temple up to Bissen while the work is going on between Bissen and Hale. It's fairly a micro question, but I note to my constituents-
Yeah, I, I, from my understandings of my conversations with Commissioner Collins on this, his hope is by the end of next week, week from Friday, they'll be done, everybody will be back on their own, you know, regular water. Um, things will be buttoned up to Bissen and, um, and there'll be some temporary improvements, temporary paving improvements, hopefully to be followed by the repaving of that stretch up to Bissen not long after that, as the work between Bissen and the traffic light is going on.
Okay.
So it's kind of, the, I think the answer is both. Some, you know, some improvements right away, just to tide over for whatever's, hopefully a brief period, and then the full repaving.
Okay, all right.
I mean, and, and another, another example, you know, it's, we, we had no rain for a while, which was good and, and not good, right? And now we're getting a little more regular fall weather. Um, the, I want to make sure I get this right. I think Common and Thistle are supposed to be final paved Wednesday, but Wednesday isn't looking great, so we're checking in tomorrow morning with the pavers to say, okay, if Wednesday doesn't work, you know, is it Thursday? So everything's a, a moving target with weather right now, but those, those are the goals with, you know, with that stretch on East Lothrup.
Okay, so up to Bissen by the end of the month?
I mean, that, that would be the very last day of the month, a week from Friday, and they'd have to be out of there in time for trick-or-treaters.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all so very much.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you, uh, Mr. Lopez Hernandez as well for being here and for presenting with us. Um, and as I said, this is, these are ongoing conversations, so certainly councilors will continue to talk about all of these projects, and thank you very much, Mayor. Um, Mr. Flaherty, we'd love to turn the floor over to you and your team, uh, here from the Greater Beverly Y. Nice to have you back. Sure that felt fun to sit here for old times' sake, for you. Nice to have you, um, former city councilor, Tim Flaherty. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Council, and thank you, Mayor. It's, it's always good to be back here. It's funny to listen to the mayor speak. It's, uh, it's kind of funny. I spent 20 years on your seats. It's kind of like, you know, I was kind of getting bored there for a second, but I'm just kidding. Um, I, uh, McPherson Youth Center is, uh, dear to my heart. Um, as you know, many of you, um, uh, I ran the youth center when I first got out of college. Miles McPherson, uh, was a young man, uh, 1968, unfortunately died of leukemia, um, but he was very involved in the youth center. Um, and the city ran that youth center for many years, and then in 1993, uh, the city ran into, uh, an $8 million deficit, and that's when the Youth Collaboration was formed. Um, I, I can talk about the, the mission and the youth center, but a lot of you understand where, why we do this, um, helping kids that are, are unfortunate and don't have the resources that many others have enjoyed. And, uh, we've been, uh, collaborating again, uh, with the city and the Y doing it since , uh, 1995. It's over, over 30 years, uh, of doing this. And as we move on to the next slide, I just want to talk about the collaboration. As I said, 1995, all the things that we've done, uh, up until then, you know, the, uh, the youth exemplary, when we actually did that, uh, in 1995, and we reinstituted it in, uh, 2023, helping kids, uh, who have overcome adversities and honoring them. They might have not be getting the, uh, the MVP of the soccer team, but they're gonna overcome an adversity that should be recognized. And, uh, and the mayor's been a great partner, uh, with us on that, so it's been, it's been great. How the Youth Collaboration Board works, uh, some of you understand that, just for people at home, um, some of you are new councilors, um, there's members appointed by the Y and members appointed by, uh, the city. As you know, you guys appoint them, and it's a great collaboration that works all together. And just so you know, there's not a lot of cities and towns and Y's that do this, so it's very unique, and it has worked very well, uh, over the 30 years. Not perfectly, nothing's perfect, right? But it's worked very well. But when you have someone like Counselor Rotondo, who, um, when we had to close the youth center, um, to, for construction, he worked tirelessly to find, uh, a place, and we found one on, on 48 Park Street, and we're very fortunate to have that. Um, so we're very, uh, lucky as have the Counselor Rotondo, who also serves, uh, as a chairman of that, at board, and also serves as part of that agreement, serves on the Beverly Youth, uh, serves on the Greater Beverly, uh, Board as well. Um, I want to introduce Cavei Morrison, uh, right here. She is the director of, um, operations director for the main building, um, and she oversees membership, uh, aquatics, gymnastics, a lot of other things within that building. You got Lorigan Sudak here, uh, I brought the whole Y team, so you guys know how committed we are. Um, she oversees childcare, after-school program. We have over 600 kids in the, in all the schools, um, and also the early learning program, and also Mayor Cahill's, uh, summer reading program she oversees. Then you got Jimmy Carroll, who's, uh, Youth and Family. He does the, uh, mostly oversees the camp with over 1,000 kids that came through the camp this past summer. And then, uh, Sarah Barth, who is, uh, newly, uh, youth director, um, down there, and she's doing a fantastic job. I can't wait to get into that building. Um, I think you said in January, right? No, I'm just kidding. Um, not pushing anybody. We want to do it, we want to do it right, and we're excited to get in there, and the kids are excited too. Um, and then Rebecca Jackson down the end, she's, uh, a, a director of community programming, which oversees the pass and Be Healthy Beverly, and that is a grant-funded program. Um, I'm going to bring them up here to talk, Jimmy and Sarah, to talk, uh, a little bit about what they've been doing and where they're headed. But before, I do want to mention to Mayor Cahill, um, it's, having been down at that building, um, when that building was built in 1975, um, I got out of college in 1990 and, and suing in there. Um, the, I was very fortunate as a young guy to get in there and, and run that place and operate that. But in 1990, the place was outdated, and it was unfortunate that the, the kids had a, you know, lucky to have a place, uh, but it was inadequate in 1990, it was probably inadequate in 1980. Um, so have a facility to have the city administration, uh, the mayor, uh, the city council back that, uh, because sometimes those aren't always, uh, you know, the things that get built, you get the high schools built, you get police stations built, um, you get things that don't always get the attention, um, in the youth center of the kids who need it the most. Um, it's very, very fortunate to, uh, get a facility like that and be able to have that, uh, every day and how important it is. And I just want to make sure that you, the councilors there 20 years from now, that you just don't forget how important it is to have a facility, uh, like that for all the kids at Beverly, but most of the kids on an everyday basis who, uh, need it the most. But Jimmy and Sarah, why don't you come on up and, uh, talk a little about what you've been going on?
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having us. Thank you, Tim, for the introduction. Um, so as it was mentioned, I'm Sarah Barth, I'm the Youth Collaboration, not the Youth Collaboration, the McPherson Youth Center Director. Um, very nice to be here.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jimmy Carroll. I'm the Camp Youth and Family Director at the Y, as Tim had mentioned. And, uh, those are the cookies that we are very proud of creating on a cookie decorating-
Those are, those are good-looking cookies.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
Took about an hour, but-
All right, so here are some recent events that we've had. We've had, uh, Bingo Night, we've had an ice cream social, Dessert Wars, where we made, had kids make their own- kids make their own Rice Krispy Treats. At the very last picture is kind of a collage of our Fuel Up Friday Initiative, which is a free food project on Fridays that allows anybody in the community 1118 to come in for free food. So it really helps cut down on food insecurity. And so, yeah, those are some of our events. What we're looking forward to, so for the fall and winter, we have a lot of things coming up that we're really excited about. We have our annual Thankful at McPherson Meal, which provides meals to people in Beverly for Thanksgiving. We have Fuel Up Friday, every Friday. We're planning on doing a nacho bar, hot dogs, pizza, things that kids like to eat. We have a paint night coming up, we're trying to get to a theater show, want to take the kids to Endicott College to see a sporting event, and then a bunch of different activities, so make your own ugly sweater, we want to host a holiday coat drive and a holiday party. And then what we're looking forward to for 2026, we want to partner with Open Space Beverly for bike safety program, wilderness first aid, building safe trails, animal CPR, which is really cool, basketball leagues, doing a field trip to Essex Tech to explore different job opportunities or opportunities that kids may not know are available to them, and having fun tea nights. And then we also want to offer courses that teach kids the basics, so getting your driving permit and license, how to go about doing that, interview prep, application prep, basics in finance, money, budgeting, and CPR first aid training, things that will give these kids the basics and fundamentals for having successful lives also.
And all those things that Sarah had just mentioned play a really big part in the numbers that we've been seeing steadily grow in 2025 with the closure of the original site and the time it took to get the temporary site that we are currently at. Our numbers were definitely impacted almost by half, as you can see, but with two months left in the year, our numbers are steadily rising. We expect a few hundred more at least, depending on how many we average each day. But a lot of the programs that Sarah had mentioned are a big draw in getting a lot more kids involved, and that all really starts with getting together with other community leaders, the school systems, overall communication, which on the next slide, we have a ton of upcoming things that we are extremely excited about, really good opportunities for not only the kids, but their families as well. A big one coming up is the Fly By 5K, which is so cool that they, it's a road race that's actually being held on the Beverly Airport tarmac, which I'm sure a lot of people can't really say they've ever stood on one before, so being able to actually run on it is great. Sarah's done a really good job at really creating a more efficient website for families, children, students, everybody to actually get access to, and we're starting to have more of a presence on social media because we think that that's really a big way to get in touch with as many youth as possible. So if you feel free, follow us on Instagram.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before I talk about the budget, Councilor Rotondo has been a big push on trying to get, even though he might not be great at some of the, some of the young kids' social media things, and neither am I, but he's been great knowing how the importance of getting that done and making sure that does. So Councilor Rotondo deserves a good clap because he has been pushing this for a long time, and I really appreciate all the work that you do for it. It's all the work behind the scenes. Talk about the Youth Center budget, just remember, when I ran this budget 30 years ago, it was $57,000 that the city was doing, it's now at $68,000. And now the budget itself, the things we have done, it's 140. So we try to do that with some Y money, we do that fundraising, but one thing is the mayor's been great with that, and Brian Ailes has been awesome with upper money, being able to support that, and we continue to try to be creative and work together to see how we can kind of, as we have a new facility coming up, it's a great working relationship doing that because the money is important, and I can really honestly say when I was on that council, that the money that's spent on that youth center is probably the best dollar spent in the city, making a huge difference. I have kids that would come up to me today that said if they weren't down that youth center, they'd be in jail. And I'm sure the same thing they tell these kids here, it makes a big difference, and without the money, without the support of the council and the mayor's office, a lot of these kids wouldn't have someplace to go. So anyways, that's a little bit about the budget, about the $140,000 and the collaboration moving forward, but I want to bring up Rebecca to talk a little about the PASS program, that is another unique program that you don't see all the time.
Thank you, Tim, and good evening. So PASS stands for Positive Alternatives for Student Support, and it's an early intervention model for students who would benefit from some social emotional support as well as a therapeutic environment where they can still access their academics. It's primarily for students who are being suspended for nonviolent offenses, and since they are receiving psychoeducational support during the program, it doesn't actually count as an in or out of school suspension. This is wonderful not only for the referring districts because of the state data that they have to submit, it's also really wonderful for the students who are considering higher education as well. And then also, as you can see, it shortens the students' total days out of school, because that's ultimately our goal, to return the students to school as quickly and with as many resources as possible. And then this program, sorry, I apologize, it is a YMCA program, but we do have some wonderful partners, so we work with the North Shore Education Consortium with regards to program and curriculum management. And then Children's Trends and Family Services are our clinical partner, and Essex County Outreach is a new partnership that we started last school year that I want to highlight, they've provided recovery coaches to the program onsite every single day. And then this is the staff that's on hand. So here's a little bit of a day in the life of a PASS student. Every single day, we have a check-in, but we also start with psychoeducational groups. Those groups are determined based off of the needs of the students who are coming in that week, so it could be, it could be building relationships, it could be coping skills, it could be support around stressors in life, it could be subjects around substance use as well. From there, we shift into academics, we spend about an hour and a half on academics. We can proctor exams as well as provide support for different homework assignments that students might be missing during the school day. And then from there, that's also an opportunity for our clinician to meet one-on-one with our students. We do a series of assessments, they cover adverse childhood experiences, depression, anxiety, substance use, as well as suicidality, depending on the needs of the students. From there in the afternoon, it's a little bit more relaxed, it's an opportunity for our staff and our students to get to know each other a little bit better, and then also for our staff to provide some support, whether with community service opportunities, but also job and resume building, support just signing up for DMV appointments for permits as well. It's also where we do our one-on-ones with our students to do reentry plans, so it's an opportunity for the student and the staff to review their time in our program, identify in and out of school supports, and then also how they might address the situation that got them suspended in the first place in the future. So that is the PASS program. And then in terms of impact, since the PASS program started, we have served over 2,000 students. Last school year alone, we served 363 students, and that average suspension time at PASS was a little bit under three days. For Beverly data alone, we served 72 students for a total of 211 program days. So Beverly by far is our number one referral for students, and it's because Beverly High School has really done a great job of identifying the students that would most benefit from the services. When it comes to reasons for referral, substance use by far is the number one reason for referral, but that's only the primary reason for referral. So you might have, you know, close to 60% of the students who are referred for substance use, a lot of those students are also dealing with mental health or school avoidance and need additional services or referrals to additional services. And then just under 50% of our students do have an IEP or a 504 plan in place. The second program I'd like to discuss with you tonight is the Be Healthy Beverly Coalition. So Be Healthy Beverly partners with the PASS program, we also partner with the McPherson Youth Center and the Youth Collaboration Board to support our youth when it comes to substance use prevention, improve mental health, and then just increase access to community supports and a healthy environment. We partner with a broad variety of community partners, really with the goal of getting a broad range of community expertise. So you can see the 12 sectors that are represented on our board in this slide. We are funded through two federal grants, and some current initiatives that we have going on right now are a trusted adult workshop series and training, some safe storage campaigns. We conducted a series of key informant interviews in the last two years to get better feedback on what the needs of the community are, supporting the police department and the health department with the Drug Take Back Days, mental health for sage trainings. And I think most importantly, we also help to facilitate a middle school coalition, a high school coalition, and then we are also a part of a regional coalition. And those youth groups all are youth-led in terms of the topics and the initiatives that they want to take on as well. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Largan, before you start, I'm just, I need to pause us just for a second to take care of a bit of business, opening and we'll recess a hearing so we can make sure that we hear from you, so I just wanted to catch you before you had to stand up and then wait for me to do this. Thank you. We'll come right back. So it is 8 o'clock, so we're going to open our posted public hearing on Order 238. Ms. Kent.
City of Beverly ordered that the city council of the city of Beverly hold a public hearing on Monday, October 20th, 2025, at 8:00 PM at 191 Caba Street, 3rd floor, council chambers, relative to the Community Preservation Committee Fiscal Year 2026 Proposed CPA Budget. This was in the newspaper on October 10th.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kent. Councilors, I would entertain a motion to recess that hearing to 8:10.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much. So we'll pick that back up at 8:10. Ms. Sudak, please.
Thank you. So I'm Largan Sudak, I am the Director of Childcare and Education Operations at the Y. Tim asked me to speak a little bit tonight about Mayor Cahill's Summer Literacy Program as an extension of our partnership with the Y, the city, Mayor Cahill's office, and the Beverly Public School System. So we are starting to plan, or will be starting to plan, what is now the 12th year of Summer Literacy Program for rising first, second, and third graders, so kids who are currently in kindergarten, first, and second grade. This actually included, we always like to remind people, we actually ran this program in 2021 after COVID. We were one of the bigger programs that came out after the shutdown. We put a lot of safety policies in place, trying to help the kids. We wanted to make sure they stayed on track for coming back in the next school year, and a lot of those measures were viewed and toured by those who were in the administration of public schools at the time. So like I mentioned, it's a partnership with the mayor's office, Beverly Public Schools. We work with the literacy coaches at each elementary school to refer kids based on their reading scores in January for the program. So these are kids who may not qualify for summer school based on any 504s or IEPs or any other academic support they receive. It's really just based on what their scores are at the testing time in January, and they're referred based on we're gonna need to have these kids attend a little bit extra help during the summer. It's five days a week for five weeks of the summer, so it's not very long, just enough time to help the kids in their reading scores. One of the great things, and we'll get to some of the details of the program, is the community connections that we have. So it's not only with the mayor's office and the public schools, but it's also with Endicott College. We do a lot of interviewing for teaching assistants in the classrooms through Endicott, through their School of Education, and a lot of those staff have actually become public school teachers in our district now. So probably over the 11 years, we have seen over 1,000 children come through the program based on what our enrollment is for each summer. The reading is not the only benefit that the family and the student receive. Each student receives, we're able to secure a free breakfast and free lunch for each student, they're able to participate in morning transportation if they need to. Weekly reading books are sent home each week to really continue that reading over the weekend or at night with their families, and the great, of course, Jimmy and I think it's the best part, is they get free camp in the afternoon if they want to walk over to the Y. So that will include things like arts and crafts or adventure. One of our biggest things that Mayor Cahill has always been really strong about is our swimming, so they'll get to go in the pool when some kids may not get the opportunity to swim during those hot days. Over the course of the program, we have continuously added more kids to the program through our staffing, but some of the big positions that we've been able to offer are behavior specialists. Last couple of years, we've had a school adjustment counselor come on board, we've hired a school nurse, and we have a float teacher, because people have vacations scheduled, and we want to make sure that there's still teachers in the classrooms. Just a couple of years ago, we started working as well with Beverly Public Schools Community Connections and MLL teachers to help communicate with families and assist them in registering or filling out emergency contact paperwork that they may need for the program. And this is my favorite picture of all 11 years, because we were able to get the entire program on the hot top to send a thank you note to Mayor Cahill for the program, who he really does do all the work. We just kind of dot the Ts and dot the Is and cross the Ts and get everybody signed up on a roster, but without the help of the city and the schools, the program would not happen at all. That's it.
Four minutes, right? I've, any questions or anything like that? That's, you know, that's our presentation. You know, I do know all of you personally, so I know I see some of you, like Kathleen, I see you at the Y, working out and doing that, and I see a lot of you around town, so that's the greatest thing about this relationship. It's not the Y doing it here, or the city, it's a joint collaboration, and it makes a big difference in kids' lives. So anyway, if you guys have any questions about anything, I can answer them, or do something afterwards, I'll be glad to answer those, and any of the team would be able to, you know. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council.
Thank you all very much. Thank you to you and your team, Mr. Flaherty, for this presentation. Councilors, we do have a few minutes if anyone has a question or a comment. Obviously, the door is open as well to continue those conversations, but any questions or comments from the council this evening?
Get off easy.
Thank you very much. And again, thank you to your whole team for being here and sharing different parts of what you do every day for young people in Beverly. Thank you very much, Mr. Flaherty.
Thank you, Madam President.
Nice to have you. Thank you. We do have a few minutes before we reconvene that public hearing, so I will just mention if there are members of the public here for the first public hearing or the other two, there are sign-up sheets over on the table by the window for members of the public who would like to speak, you can get up at any point and add your name to those. Why don't we take care of just a little bit of business before we reopen that hearing? We have two sets of meeting minutes that we can approve this evening. One is from our regular city council meeting, June 16th, 2025, and one is from our Finance and Property Committee meeting, June 17th, 2025. There are motion to approve those sets of minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Carries a million zero, and those are approved. Thank you. Ms. Kent, let's go to Communications from His Honor, the mayor, please.
Order number 241 for grant for $54,850.71 municipal road safety program grant from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security Office of Grant and Research to be used for traffic enforcement campaigns.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Order 242, a grant for $85,000 for inflammation grant from the Municipal Broadband Institutions Municipal Digital Equity Inflammation Program. This funding will improve digital services.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Order 243, a grant for $23,795 for the Justice Assistant Grant for mobile radios for the police department.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Order number 244, a grant for $124,700 from the Nationwide Fishing Trap Removal Assessment and Prevention Program via the Virginia Institute of Marine Science to clean up Beverly Harbor's coastal waters.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property. Councilors, I would entertain a motion to take a two-minute recess, so that if our friends from the Y would like to be able to leave, you're welcome to stay, but if you need to get your things together and be able to go, you're also free to do that, and that will also give our friends from the CPA a chance to get themselves ready for the hearing. All those in favor? Thank you very much. We'll be back in two minutes. We'll be back in two minutes. Thank you very much, everyone. We'll call the full council back to order after that recess. Our thanks again to Mayor Cahill and his team for putting together that quarterly update, and then particularly to Mr. Lopez Hernandez, who is here tonight with Mayor Cahill to present, to Mr. Flaherty and his team from the Youth Center and from the Y for that wonderful presentation that we just heard, those updates. And now we are going to reopen our public hearing on Order 238. This is on the Community Preservation Committee's Fiscal Year 26 Proposed CPA Budget. Heard Ms. Kent read that order. Members of the public who wish to speak in this public hearing can sign up on the sign-up sheet by the window. And I see that we have Derek Beckwith, who is here with us to get things started. Thank you very much, Mr. Beckwith.
Thank you very much, Madam President and distinguished councillors. It's great to be with you all again this evening to talk once again about our budget. Honored to be representing the members of the CPC who work every day. And I also, as we're presenting the budget, want to do a special thanks for the assistance that we received from Bryant Ailes, our Finance Director, for the city. He does a terrific job, he and his staff, helping us. Also, Jean Delios, our CPA Coordinator, who's doing just a phenomenal job helping us do our work. And, you know, so many other members of the administration and the city government, you know, including Beth Oldmixon, who is providing sage legal advice to us, Darlene Wynn from the Planning Department. So I'm just honored to be here to just talk numbers tonight. In the packet that we sent to you, we included the budget proposal that the CPC members voted unanimously to propose and recommend to you. They follow the surcharge, which is, you know, legal requirement and, you know, all that sort of stuff, and also the estimated state match that will be received this year based on what's happening at the State House. And our budget comes in at 1.28, well, $1,280,700. And we have legal requirements to set asides at least minimum amounts of 10% of that amount. 10% to historic resources, so that's $128,007. 10% for community housing, that's $128,007. 10% for open space, and that's $128,007. And that leaves a general budget reserve balance of $832,045. And an administrative budget of 5% of $64,004. So those numbers all meet that. I do want to say that in addition to the budget that you passed this year for FY '26, we are carrying over funds that have not yet been tapped into. And every year, when there's a quote-unquote surplus or, you know, untargeted money, money that hasn't been set aside for projects, that gets carried to the next year. And so if we're fortunate enough to have you pass the budget that we proposed, the balances that we have actually in CPA funds for the city will total $2,943,888.53, which means that, you know, we can do a lot and hope to do a lot for the city. I can also give you an update on what we're seeing so far with Round 13 so you could see things in perspective, because last week, our pre-application deadline came in. We have a two-part application process. We have pre-apps that come in, and that's when we vet the projects that either the city or neighborhood groups, et cetera, come forward with to make sure that they are eligible for funding, that they're being applied for in the right category and for a purpose that meet the criteria spelled out in the ordinance and the Massachusetts statute. So we do that vetting process to make sure no one is wasting their time and that, you know, we're in sound legal standing to be able to move forward to consider for funding that project. We received five pre-apps so far, or by Thursday, the 9th, which was our deadline, and one out-of-cycle application. And that totals $1.9 million if we were to fund everything at what was being requested. That leaves still $1 million outstanding. So the committee, in looking at this, and that would be a very large carryover from year to year. And so the committee determined for two reasons. Because of the amount of money that would be available, and also because we were expecting more than five pre-applications to come in to set up a supplemental round of pre-applications. So I'm happy to be promoting that tonight. And that's one of the things the city solicitor advised us to do is to promote the new round or the additional round, supplemental round of pre-applications. It's a two-page application. And our deadline for receiving that second round is November 13th. Our committee meets in a regular meeting on November 20th. We'll review those, determine whether or not they meet the requirements for funding. If they do, we'll invite them to submit full applications, which would be due on the same day as the ones that were received in October, on October 9th. However, any supplemental pre-apps that come in will not be prioritized. The priority will go to the applications that have already come in and met the original deadline. And then any additional applications will be considered after we review and consider those. So that's what we're doing in trying to maximize community input and the community being able to take advantage of the CPA funds, maximize, you know, our impact this year.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Beckwith. That's a really helpful overview and introduction to the budget and all the information that we received, so thank you. Councillors, are there questions or comments at this time? Councillor Sweeney?
Just one question, Madam President. And thank you, Mr. Beckwith, for taking the time to give us that overview as well as for providing additional information about the existing fund balance. And that's really where my question is. It appears that if the entirety of the 1.9 million in applications is approved, that wouldn't be that much more than what has been approved in previous years in terms of thinking the balance that is typically carried over. In your experience on the CPC, is that the case? Is this a typical amount of funding to be sitting in the pipeline at this stage in the pre-application process?
It is. And one of the things we have not done in the past is to extend the pre-app round. I mean, it's a lot of administrative work and a lot of work for the committee to review. In the past, before, I've been honored to be on the CPC for the last six years, six-plus. And we typically get, you know, one, well, it depends. If there's an open space piece, like Marine Farm, it was $1.1 million for that alone. And, you know, so put it in perspective. When we had Brisco funding, when we had Anchor Point funding, those things really took big chunks of any quote-unquote surplus that we had. We haven't had anything like that. So the surplus is in and around what we've seen. The 1.9 million that we've had in this round coming in is more than we had in funding requests for last year. So we're ahead of where we were last year. But I know that we're planning on sending a note to everyone who has applied for a grant in the past, to you as councillors, to departments, to anyone who has been involved in the CPC CPA process in the past, encouraging anyone they know of who's interested to apply. And then, and we can help them through the process as well. So.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Beckwith.
You're welcome.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you, Mr. Beckwith. Any other questions from councillors? We do have one member of the public who has signed up to speak, Mr. Taylor. I see that you already have moved over towards the podium. Vice President Corrali is our timekeeper here. And so, Mr. Taylor, if you would begin by stating your name and address for the record, even though I just gave away your name, and then you'll have three minutes to speak. If you hear the timer go off, if you could just draw your remarks to a close at that point.
Of course. Who am I looking for for the timer? All right. Thank you, Councillor Corrali. All right. Uh-oh. All right. Thank you. My name is John Taylor, and I live at 41 Coal Street. And I didn't know whether this is budgetary discussion that better relates to public comment or the CPA, but it was budgetary that was brought up, so here goes. And I think what came up in the June hearings that you all had was about budgets and about being more proactive in general, right? And I think previous council in 2003 gives you a really great roadmap of how to handle this. And since it directly relates to what happened in my life, we will focus on that throughout the entire comment that I have. So in 2003, then-Councillor Guanci and the very new Ward Five councillor introduced a resolution because they then realized that the then-mayor had very little bench strength and support over budgets and financial things, and that it was a time of tremendous uncertainty in the fiscal outlook of the city. And they set expectations for what the budget might look like. It was also three years after I had moved to Beverly, so we got to keep the focus on me. And as I mentioned, it was a time of uncertainty, which seems kind of like today and the budget situation that you face. I had just lost my job then, so we need to keep the focus on me. And in the face of all this, the councillors at that time set expectations. They realized that they had a legislative mandate, and they kept their focus on the legislative mandate. They didn't set the budget for that mayor, who lacked that financial support, but they set the expectation for the executive. And those expectations were pretty general principles, like, hey, we'd like a balanced budget. You can hear, like, the lack of financial strength. And things like, oh, we'd like a certain amount in cash reserves. These are things you could be thinking about, and I hope that you would be having conversations about right now. Even though it's ahead of the budgetary season, you can do this. And as a resident, I hope you would. I'm very pleased to report that I still live in Beverly and that I now have a job. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Taylor. Are there other members of the public who wish to speak in this public hearing? All right, seeing none, I'll close that public hearing and refer that back to the Committee on Finance and Property for further action this evening. And thank you, Mr. Beckwith, and thank you, Ms. Delios, for being here as well with us this evening and for that very helpful presentation and overview as well. We have a few minutes before our 8:30 public hearing, so let's go to communications from other city officers and boards, please. Ms. Kent?
Order number 245 from Councillor Bowen, and it is her letter of resignation.
Thank you. Councillor Bowen, would you like to say a few words about your letter?
Thank you. I hope it did not come as a surprise to anyone. I've been telegraphing this since the spring. But in order to not be fulfilling two roles at once and create more space, it has been my plan to resign from the council just ahead of our upcoming election. It is a surprise that it is October already and that election is now just a couple of weeks away. So I wanted to file it not only formally to the city clerk, but publicly for the council to see and for members of the public to see the exact timing and process. So the plan is to serve till the end of this month, so I'll get one more Public Services Committee meeting to hold National Grid accountable for their work to us. And then we'll roll off October 31st, and the city will follow its charter plan for filling vacancies so that whoever is the top vote-getter among at-large candidates who's not currently seated in this November 4th election can be sworn in to complete November and December and then pick up their actual elected term in January with the council. So I have nothing but gratitude, and you will see me back in the chamber often with collaboration on state and local projects. And so really, it's a formality to get this out in the most public way possible and to have the opportunity to thank you all and to say how much I have enjoyed serving in this role and how much I will enjoy working with you going forward.
Well, our thanks to you as well, Councillor Bowen. And as you said, we'll certainly see you back to do some of those state legislative updates. And I think if you're open to it, we'd like to have you back before the end of this year as well so that we can do a bit more of a proper goodbye and recognition for your service here on the council than we're doing this evening as we're receiving your letter. So thank you for your service, and we'll look forward to having you back for a more proper thank you and farewell as well as you step into your next role, and we'll see you back here as well. Councillors, I would entertain a motion to receive and place on file Councillor Bowen's letter. All those in favor? Thank you. That carries 9-0. And although we're not doing an official goodbye to Councillor Bowen this evening, I think a round of applause for her service and her time. And certainly will look forward to future good work with you in your state rep role. And that brings us to 8:30. So we will open our posted public hearing on Order 239. This is National Grid's petition 311-33424. Ms. Kent?
City of Beverly ordered that the city council of the city of Beverly hold a public hearing on Monday, October 20th, 2025, at 8:30 p.m. at 191 Cabot Street, Third Floor, Council Chambers, relative to National Grid petition 311-33424 to install underground facilities on Hale Street. This was in the This was in the newspaper on October 10th.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. And I believe we have our National Grid representative here, if you want to come to the podium and offer us any insight or introductory remarks that you have on this petition.
Good evening. It's Mael Mikul, distribution designer at National Grid 44 River Street, Beverly. I'm here for petition for Hale Street, National Grid, to install underground facilities on Hale Street, beginning at point approximately 270 feet east of the central line of the intersection of Lotthrop Street and Hale Street, and continuing approximately five feet in south direction. National Grid is petitioning to install a new heavy-duty handhold for 21-2 and a total of five feet of 1.3-inch count width. The count width will go to, excuse me, the address, to 93A Hale Street. So we will, of course, put a heavy-duty handhold on the side, public sidewalk walk, and trench five feet towards 93 Hale Street to serve them secondary service. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from members of the council on this petition? Councillor Bowen.
Thank you. I think the, the question that we had in committee was whether this work was related to recent, what looked like more emergency work over the summer in approximately the same location that went out into the street and through the sidewalk.
No, it is not related to anything. This is a new construction, and we had to bring service to the new customer. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Hausmann. Good collaboration, then. Are there other questions or comments from members of the council on this petition? Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in this public hearing on this National Grid petition? Seeing none, we'll close this public hearing and refer that back to the Committee on Public Services for further action this evening. And I know you're here for the 8:41 as well, so we'll circle back shortly. Thank you so much. We do have a little bit of time to begin to take up order 220. Well, I'm sorry. We do have unfinished business from a previous meeting. This is order 163. We'll continue to hold this on our main agenda for future action, potential future action. For motions and orders, we do have order 220. This is available for final passage this evening. I'm going to invite Solicitor Olmixon to come up and offer us a little bit of an update. The amendment that was made, that we made and voted on to this order at our last meeting is not an amendment that can become part of an ordinance itself. And so Solicitor, I'll turn it over to you to explain a little bit more, and then we'll go about taking up this order. We may have to pause, do the hearing, and come back to it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, President Flowers. So yes, in reviewing for tonight's meeting, I noticed that at the last meeting, the council had taken up an amendment to this order to incorporate some conditions that the Parking and Traffic Committee had recommended. And those amendments, which were kind of conditions, they can't be part of the order, right? And they can't be part of the ordinance. The ordinance is either the stop sign is there or the stop sign is not. And so the conditions couldn't be part of that. So I'm happy to take questions with respect to the actual conditions, if you have any. But my recommendation would be is that there be a motion, I wrote it down too. There it is. A motion to amend the previous amendment, essentially retracting the amendment and voting on the order as originally drafted for the ordinance changes with the red lines.
Thank you, Solicitor.
Between orders and ordinances, amendments and retractions of amendments, it's very confusing, but.
Are there questions for Solicitor? Councillor Bowen.
Thank you. I've, I've been thinking, especially since we got some additional information about the signalization of the River Street signal since that last meeting. Is it possible for us at this stage, given what we voted on already and what's been published, to separate the two, the Kernwood Ave. and the McPherson and River Street stop sign pieces and vote on them separately?
Sure. I mean, that would just be bifurcating the order, I think. That, that is procedurally possible.
Okay.
Yes.
Councillor Atendo, I couldn't tell if you were looking to get in here. Councillor Spang.
No, I was just checking.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for the Solicitor, just sort of on the mechanics of this piece? Okay. So we could, thank you, Solicitor. So we do have time if we want to begin the process. As you just heard, the Solicitor's recommendation, just because those conditions cannot become part of the ordinance, is that I will invite someone to make a motion to, Councillor Spang.
I'll make a motion to amend to remove my previous amendment.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion? This essentially, if it passes essentially well, as Solicitor Olmixon just said, will return order 220 to, as it was originally filed. Councillor Atendo.
Thank you, Madam President. When this was brought to my attention, I did talk with Mr. Tognazi just to kind of allude about what these conditions were in there. What he stated to me is because of the federal highway rules that they follow, they automatically put these in anyways. So the stop sign would be removed, the crosswalk sign would be put in that place, and then within 200 feet, the other one would be there to give the warning of the first crosswalk. So those are done automatically anyways. So that's why there was no, there's not necessarily to have that type of an order in there or condition.
Thank you, councillor. Any further discussion or questions on the amendment to remove the amendment? All right. So we have a motion in the second to remove the amendment, return order 220 to its original filing status. All those in favor? All right. That carries nine zero. And so now we have order 220, as it was originally filed. Ms. Kent, for a second reading, would you please read order 220 for us this evening?
Be entertained by the City Council of the City of Beverly as follows. Chapter 270, Section 270, 25B, Stop Intersections is amended as follows. Removing stop signs from the following location. Number one, Kernwood Ave., north and south at the intersection of Harris Avenue. Number two, McPherson Drive, south at intersection of Federal Street. And number three, River Street, north at the intersection of Federal Street. And this was in the newspaper on September 19th, and this is for final passage.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kent. And just for those who are following along or if councillors are anticipating this question, Solicitor Olmixon did assure us that this order 220 is available for, for final passage this evening because it was originally posted and read, as Ms. Kent just read it. Ms. Dupont read it in that form at our last meeting. So it has had two readings. It has been published. So is there a motion to approve order 220? Councillor Bowen.
Sorry. Per, per my earlier question, I would like to move that we take the two pieces of this order separately. And I'm not sure exactly. I'm looking towards Solicitor Olmixon for guidance on what that might look like and if that's in order at this point.
Sure. So would you, could you just explain what you're looking to separate?
Yeah, to separate the vote on removing the stop sign at Kernwood Ave. from removing the stop signs on, at the intersection of Federal, River, and McPherson.
Okay. So, so Kernwood would be one, and McPherson and River would be a second.
Yes.
I wasn't sure if you wanted one, two, and three. So, okay. So in that case, if you would need to, it might be better to just vote on them separately then, at that point, to vote on Kernwood and then potentially vote on McPherson and River as, together. If that makes sense. Yes, okay. So you, so you could just take it, just like we've done with some other things, yeah?
Councillor Bowen.
I guess there's no motion or a separate motion needed, a motion to approve the, the initial, the Kernwood Avenue stop sign, and then they each follow from there.
Yep. Councillor Hausmann.
Just for the benefit of anyone who might be listening, before we take separate votes, if that's what we're going to do, if Councillor Bowen, if you could, through Council President, explain the, your intention for why we should bifurcate the votes. That'd be helpful.
Thank you. And before, before you do that, Councillor Bowen, I'm just going to pause us. This seems like a good place to pause because it's 8:40. And we'll take our third public hearing, and then we'll return to this conversation. And we'll pick up right there. So it is 8:40, so we'll open the posted public hearing on order 223. This is National Grid petition 31113315. Ms. Kent.
City of Beverly ordered that the City Council of the City of Beverly held a public hearing on Monday, October 20th, 2025, at 8:40 PM at 191 Cabot Street, Third Floor, Council Chambers, relative to National Grid petition 31113315 to install underground facilities on Tall Tree Drive. And this is in the newspaper on October 10th.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. And so once again, I'll invite our National Grid rep back to the podium. Anything that you'd like to say to get conversation opened on this National Grid petition?
Good evening. For National Grid to install underground facilities to Tall Tree Drive, beginning at approximately 25 feet north of the central line of the intersection of Tall Tree Drive and Paul Street, and continuing approximately 545 feet in east direction, install two heavy-duty handholds and 3-inch count width from razor at pole 3678 to existing pad mount transformer 2-97 to Tall Tree Drive. So right now, we're having a direct buried cable, which causes a lot of voltage drops and more faults, hence more outages. The installation of the conduit will also provide us an easier access to upgrading and maintaining our cables in the future and, of course, a better service to the community. And of course, it will take about two to three days of work. During non-work hours, trenches will be covered with steel plates. After finishing the work, National Grid is, of course, committed to close the trench and cover it with asphalt and, of course, restore it as it was before. This work will also cause 48 hours outage for few residents on Tall Tree Drive. So National Grid outage department is opus, working on getting the list and contacting all the residents at Tall Tree Drive by mail before the outage. And of course, if anyone needs help, they will be contacted by National Grid and helped. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor St. Clair, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Did you say 48-hour power outage?
About 48 hours, hopefully less. But we are working on primary, so it has to be shut down to install on the conduit and then install a new cable.
How many residents are affected?
I am not sure yet, but this is a job that our outage department does, but that will be between 12 and 15 houses on the, on the Tall Tree Drive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Hausmann.
Yes, thank you. Will the outage affect everyone who was on the notice list submitted to the council for the approval?
I don't think so.
Because some of them, some of these are on Boyle, some on Brookhead, some on Robin.
Yes, those are on private roads. I'm not sure if all of them will have outages. I'm here especially for Tall Tree Drive. My apologies, but I can check with our team to see if everyone is getting an outage that day.
And can you explain what kind of mitigating service or help that National Grid can provide residents during the outage that might affect, you know, their refrigerator, things melting, and any one of a number of things, including medical issues for medical devices?
I think, yeah, sorry. So I think when it's medical issues, we call it high-critical customers. We do have a database of them, and of course, if we don't know about it, that's why we contact all of them in case of they need help. In that case, if it's medical emergency or they need medical help, National Grid does provide power generators for them and distribute power for them for the short period of time of the outage.
But National Grid does not provide generators for people other than those with medical issues?
I'm not sure about that. I have to check with the outage department.
Okay. Just to clarify, you said four eight hours, not, not two eight hours, right?
Forty-eight. Forty-eight hours. Yeah, approximately. Hopefully less.
Okay. I can say that I spoke with Commissioner Collins, if I may, Council President, with both Eric Barber and Commissioner Collins, and they did underscore the need for this service to be upgraded. These, the existing lines are antiquated by today's technology standards. And so they, they did speak favorably about the need to have this done and that they would be, as I understand it, this is the first step in the process. This process would then go to engineering, who would talk with National Grid about, you know, what kind of repair would be done to the streets and so forth. So the engineering department does support this work being done. But obviously, it would be helpful before we, from my, in my opinion, before we approve the work to both hear back from National Grid and maybe insist National Grid provide generators or some explanation about what kind of support they can give all these residents. Two days without electricity, even if the hope and expectation is less, is a very long time to go without, without power. So it seems to me that it's not unreasonable for the council to get that information and support the residences before this work is done and this is approved.
Thank you, Councillor Hausmann. Councillor Spang.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, National Grid, when outages were going to occur downtown, would send a letter and also do a robo-call to customers? And I would just stress, if you can do the robo-call again, because the mail tends to be a very thin envelope with a one-page notice, and it often gets recycled or thrown out. So I think you have phone numbers for all of your customers and.
Of course, we have all their billing information. So of course, their addresses, their contact, email, phone numbers. And I will make sure to let the outage team to know about the robo-call. Thank you for this idea. I will let them know for sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Atendo.
When are you estimating this work to occur? What time of the year? Are we looking in the near future? Because you're going to be turning off electricity, which does generate for the heat and what have you. So it's no different than a power outage during a snowstorm or something. So when are we looking to do this?
Exactly. So we were trying to do it as soon as possible before it gets really cold. But we will still have to check with our underground team and also the gas team that will be the trenching. And if it happens to take more time, we will, of course, not do it until the weather is better for everyone.
Which, which goes to my second question is, you're saying 48 hours, but the record of National Grid has never been very great on their timing. You know, we'll use the transmission line or other work. Will they tell us six weeks and ends up being 12 weeks? So I just want to kind of point that out as you don't have a great reputation on your time schedules. So that kind of also concerns, like, I think it's right that the council does have a lot of this information before we even consider even approving it.
So as you said, transmission, that takes, we have some project that goes five to 10 years for transmission. I would say it's a huge project. For this one, our team is able to trench about 500 to 600 feet per day. So I would say one day for trenching the whole street, one day for running the conduits and the cables, and maximum another day to clothe the trench.
And you know that factually on the trenching piece. Again, I'm going to refer to Goat Hill and my colleague to my right here, who can definitely tell you that what they anticipated and what they were faced with was totally different, which is why we're still dealing with the transmission line well over 12 months from when it was originally supposed to be completed. We're dealing with it on River Street too right now.
I can see with our underground team to see how long it usually takes them. But before this meeting, I had a talk with our underground supervisor, who told me for, after reviewing this street, he said it will take about two to three days. So that's why I prefer to say three days in that case. But I still have to check with him and get back to you just to confirm that. I will check with you.
So now we're at over 48 hours. You're saying two, two days would be 48 hours?
No, 48, 48 hours of the outage.
Okay. And then two to three days for.
Two to three days total for the entire work. Yes, sir. You're welcome.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Spang.
Just to add on to my colleague, there's a lot of, now I'm missing the word, ledge under the streets in Beverly. So if your team can also check and verify that there's not ledge on this street, because that led to a lot of the delays on the transmission line. So if, they just probably want to check with the engineering department to make sure there's not ledge under this.
So we are doing distribution here. It's different from transmission. And we are replacing an existing direct buried wire, which, of course, will, our new conduit will take the same route of it. So. So it's, we are already sure there is no ledge on that trench that we are trenching.
Counselor Hausmann.
Yes. So not to beat a dead horse here, but National Grid initially came to us for the 115 KV project, saying it would take no more than two years. We're now into the third year, and it looks like with some other issues on the bridge, it's going to be into the fourth year. So you understand that we have some experience with issues with National Grid, and our constituents certainly have had that. So from my vantage point, dealing with National Grid, which really has brought to bear an excellent team, helping citizens and the Citizen Advisory Committee deal with these issues, from my vantage point, it's not enough to put a mailer in and even have a robo-call. You need to have someone go in person, establish absolute contact with every affected person in person, and make sure that occurs before, in way of notice and arrangements, before I would, could possibly find my way supporting cutting off some power for, for up to, you know, 48 hours or more. So when you come back, because I don't think you're going to get approval this evening, when you come back, I am asking for you on behalf of our constituents to provide a very robust plan, description of exactly what kind of notice you're going to provide, and that should include in-person, as far as I'm concerned, in-person notice, as well as, I think for 48 hours, there ought to be generators for everyone, medical issue or not medical issue. And if, and if not, there's going to, you're going to have to have a very good explanation for why not, and what kind of alternative arrangement there would be. So just, just so you're aware of where at least this council is coming from on this application. So I support the upgrade. It sounds like it definitely needs to be done, but it needs to be done in the right way, in a way that is not inappropriately impacting on our constituents.
Of course. Thank you for your concerns, and I will make sure to see with our outage team, to speak to them about the robo-call, the mails, and of course, the in-person contact between National Grid and the clients, and of course, try our best to provide alternatives to everyone during that timeframe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Bowen.
Thank you. I appreciate all the comments. I would echo them without repeating them. I think we will have an opportunity potentially next week, since we do have a Public Services Committee meeting scheduled to talk about other National Grid issues. If it works to get some of the answers by then, we might be able to use that time to keep the project moving, but also have space for discussion ahead of the next regular city council meeting. I just had one other question that, that may be more of a homework than right now, which is just whether there is much of this sort of outdated distribution lines in the city? Are we anticipating other projects like this? Like, is this part of a bigger attempt to update distribution lines, or is this kind of a one-off project?
So this direct burial problem, it's all over the United States, and all electric companies in all 50 states are trying their best to get rid of them. It's a big issue, sometimes safety issue, not always. So, and unfortunately, we don't have database to show us where exactly all of them are. So we kind of sometimes step on them by surprise. We want to just upgrade this customer, and we find the whole neighborhood is dark buried. And of course, sometimes we do know about it, and we try our best to fix trench by trench, to not have a whole city or whole state outage, of course. So we tried our best to find them and work one by one and get rid of them, as all other electric companies around 50 states. Thank you.
Counselor Stein.
If I may, I was just going to suggest that we maybe not close the public hearing tonight in case residents of Tall Tree Drive are watching this at home and want to share their thoughts.
Yes, I think that's a great suggestion, Counselor Spang. It seems like for counselors, we may be at a pausing point, particularly if we're not going to close the hearing this evening. There are no members of the public signed up tonight, but Counselor Spang, it's a great point. Residents of Tall Tree Drive or other neighborhoods nearby are watching and want to come and participate. Our next regular council meeting is actually the second Monday of November, which is a little bit unusual, but there is an election the first week of November, and so we are moving, we have already voted, that's part of our calendar for this year, to have that meeting on November 10th. So I would entertain a motion to recess this public hearing to our November 10th meeting at 7:30 PM.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's nine zero. So thank you very much. We'll look forward to picking up this conversation at our November 10th meeting, and members of the public are encouraged and invited to come and participate if they would like.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
See you on November 10th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, thank you, everyone. Let's, oh, sorry, Counselor Crowley.
Just before we move on to, just a quick question of it, because I know we had talked about, we have public, we have a public services meeting next week and everything else like that. Are we okay to discuss about it there, even though it's suspended?
I don't think so, because it's now not referred to public services. So until we close...
I just wanted to make sure, because I know we had just talked about maybe of that, and if they brought some stuff back, I just wanted to make sure we were still within...
That is a great, great question. National Grid certainly could send via the clerk any information that we've just talked about, and that could be given to counselors for us to have at our next public hearing. But great question, would not be part of the conversation at that public services meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. But certainly, if, if Ms. Kent receives any of the information from National Grid in the meantime, it can be disseminated to the council. Thank you for that question, Counselor. So we were going to pick up, before we break for subcommittee, I'd like to just wrap up motions and orders, that's Order 220. We were going to pick up that conversation. Counselor Bowen, with you, Counselor Hausmann had asked if you could just explain a little bit further your thinking about bifurcating that order.
Yes, thank you. And so I think the case for removing the stop sign on Kernwood Ave is clear, and makes sense, and is timely. The discussion that we had at the last meeting was around reservations that the Parking and Traffic Commission had that prompted them to suggest some conditions on how the work gets done, and reservations from, from counselors about safety for pedestrians on that stretch if there is no break in traffic from either a stop sign or a signal that periodically turns red and slows things down. And we have heard from Mastat since that the timeline for turning on that signal at River Street is well into 2026. So for me, I would prefer to go ahead with the stop sign removal on Kernwood that responds to the changing traffic patterns and wait to act on the stop signs on McPherson and River Street until there is that change in traffic patterns to, to really prompt and justify it. So I would prefer to take them as separate votes, because I would vote separately, differently on the two pieces.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hausmann.
And can, Council President, can we have some discussion on that point before we vote?
You can.
So when this first came up in subcommittee, I spoke with Counselor Rotendo, who's one of the proponents of this, about the question of, well, if we do it now before the lights are up, what's going to happen at the intersection on River Street? And he provided an explanation, and I'm not sure the whole council has heard that, but even if they have, I'd like to refresh my memory, but to hear from the proponents of this portion of the ordinance about why the timing does not pose, why the timing may not pose a problem if the council were to vote in favor of it.
Counselor Rotendo.
Thank you. So quickly, is originally that was considered when the bridge first closed, because the traffic, that four-way stop sign was put in, it was in response to people using Margin to Federal Street as a way of cutting through, so there was more chances of accidents. Now that Margin to Federal Street is no longer being accessed as traffic, which will be closed down as of, within the next few days because of the temporary bridge being done, there'll be a blocked, blocked road at that particular section where the car washes. The benefit to it being done is it will help with the flow of traffic from River to McPherson to River. My own observations, which I use it at least 15 times a day, because that's my route of travel, since the bridge is out from my house to my restaurant, and traveling to Stop and Shop and other parts, to try to avoid the lights on Rantoul Street. I can tell you that my own observation at various times of the day, it's not just one specific time, that the traffic coming from Federal to either take a left or right onto either McPherson or onto River Street is minimal. What I witness often is people are more doing a rolling stop anyways, so they're rarely stopping as it is right now. I know that the traffic signal keeps getting pushed back, which because it's the National Grid transmission lines causing the issues, but the flow of that traffic there right now has been considerably causing backups to Elliot Street and causing backup on Elliot Street as well, because of the traffic trying to take a left or being stopped from taking a left, because that car doesn't take it. So it has initially been an issue to have consideration several years ago. It was discussed with engineering and as with others to pause it and wait until the traffic signal went in. At this point right now, as we're, you know, as we're putting this stop sign in for a consideration of ultimately to be removed, it made the most sense. I did talk with our engineering department, as well as when we went to parking and traffic, they supported it 100%. They didn't have any issues with it at all. They actually thought it made sense. Their considering, their consideration was more to do with the crosswalks, and in talking with Mr. Tognazi, who that's his, as a supervisor of that department, stated that he would immediately be putting those signs anyways, that they shouldn't be conditioned. So that would be rectified as it is right now.
Thank you, Counselor Rotendo.
Then, then it's just my question. That's what I wanted to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion just on this question of taking the two separate votes?
Actually, Council President, I, I guess I do, as someone who does frequent McPherson Ave with some frequency, whether or not this is the right answer, I can absolutely say that I agree with the observation that there's a real problem at those stop signs, including the backups way down to Elliot Street. And although, you know, generally, it's not the way you think of going about solving a problem, if, if this solution doesn't work, we can always look at it again, but certainly what we have right now does not seem to be working well.
Thank you. I think it seems to me that we're, we're beginning to move into the discussion about the two, the two topics, which to me says we're maybe we're ready to take a vote. I don't see there's any harm in taking them as two separate votes. So let's begin with a motion to approve, as Counselor Bowen outlined it, the way that she envisioned splitting it, the stop signs at Kernwood Ave. There are motion to approve that portion of Order 220. Is there any further discussion on the Kernwood Ave stop signs? All those in favor? Right. Thank you. That carries nine zero for Kernwood Ave. And then is there a motion to approve the changes to the stop signs, removal of stop signs at McPherson and River? Any further discussion on this portion of Order 220? Counselor Bowen.
Thank you. I won't belabor the point. I'll just say really my motivation is coming from the, the crosswalks themselves and the pedestrian access there, and, and I do observe, particularly because traffic is backed up, that drivers get aggressive, and as soon as they have that chance, whether there's someone walking or not, they're right there. So given the, the foot traffic, particularly of young people in that area, I think it's important not to get ahead of what is a very carefully planned traffic improvement that is coming, not as fast as we want, but, but soon. So that's, that's why I feel differently about this piece, and, and understand as well that it's going to be hard to predict, and if we remove those signs, it's not necessarily the end of looking at traffic flows in that area and making other adjustments as needed.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion on this portion of Order 220? All right. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of removing stop signs at McPherson and River? Five, six? Okay. And all those opposed? All right, so that passes six, three. Both of those votes are for final passage of these portions of Order 220. So thank you. Thank you, counselors, for the conversation. Thank you Solicitor Olmexon for your help getting us back into the conversation, and thank you Counselors Rotendo and Crowley for filing Order 220 to begin with, and getting us into this conversation and, and thinking about that area and how we can continue to be mindful of that. I would entertain a motion now to take a brief break for some committee work. All those in favor? That carries nine zero. Let's have Finance and Property here in the chamber, Public Services in the committee room, and Legal Affairs in the hall.
All right. Call to order, the Committee on Finance and Property. A number of grants that were referred to us tonight, as well as the public hearing on the CPC budget. So we'll take up that one first, Order 238. This is proposed CPA budget, 1.1, $1,280,070. So any further questions or comments, colleagues? Okay?
May I just make a comment?
Madam President, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I, I know I sort of said this during the hearing, but I just wanted to, to thank you, Mr. Beckwith and Ms. Delius. I felt the presentation that you offered us, not only of the budget, but that sort of look ahead at what you're seeing in the pre-application process, made it, from my perspective as a counselor, makes it very easy to be able to access what the proposed budget might be able to do, and just to envision what could be done for the city, as you said. So I just wanted to thank you. I think that was a really helpful presentation of the budget, for me.
Well said. Thank you, Madam President. Appreciate your work, Mr. Beckwith. I would entertain a motion to approve Order 238.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is approved, three to zero. Okay. We'll go to Order 241. This is a grant from the Executive Office of Public Safety, Office of Grant and Research, Municipal Road Safety Program, for $54,000. Ms. Barrett, do you want to tell us about this one?
Thank you, yes. This is an annual grant that the Beverly Police Department receives. Sergeant Dana Nicholson works on this grant. I collaborate with him, and it's for basically to encourage safe driving and to reduce the amount of accidents or fatalities. It's for crosswalk safety, DUI, speed enforcement, and yeah, it's an annual grant, no match, and we just got in all the documentation on it today, so we're hoping that you approve it.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. I'm glad to see this one. I get a lot of calls about traffic enforcement, so more resources is definitely needed. Colleagues, any comments or questions? Counselor Sweeney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to confirm, so I agree with the point that the chairman made about traffic enforcement and the challenges we have, and I think a big part of the concern that I hear from residents is the feeling, whether justified or not, that there's kind of a lack of presence in the neighborhood from police officers to enforce the standards of the road. These, this grant wouldn't go toward paying for increasing patrol in any neighborhood in terms of staffing, right? It's all non-staffing expenses?
No. Yeah, no, this grant is based on, we're assigned certain enforcement activities per quarter, and so, for example, it starts November 1st, and I think our first quarter is winter impaired driving. So that's the focus of that quarter, and our officers who are out there on the three shifts are looking for those types of violations. And then another quarter, it's crosswalk safety, so they'll set up patrols that will be monitoring certain crosswalks, probably high-volume crosswalks, to make sure vehicles are stopping to let pedestrians safely cross the road. DUI, I know they set up in different areas of the, the city in that particular quarter. DUI, I know they set up in different areas of the city in that particular quarter at certain times, you know, more in the evening when people might be out at bars and Friday and Saturday nights, more so than maybe like a Monday night. So it's all pre-assigned by EOPS and OGR what the enforcement activity is for each quarter.
And do the actual dollars that we receive from the grant go towards training or toward the use of specialized equipment at specific types of enforcement, whether it would be, you know, like you mentioned, it's DUI-specific enforcement activity?
Yeah, I believe it's for both, it's for the officers that are on that shift managing that enforcement activity. And then if there are any things needed, like radar guns, those can be purchased with the grant as well.
I appreciate that, and I plan to vote in favor.
Yes.
This is obviously a favorable grant, I just want to make sure I have an understanding on whether or not this is a grant that we depend upon to meet a certain level of capacity from a staff perspective-
No.
-in getting officers on the road to-
No.
-conduct any sort of traffic enforcement measure.
No, not a staffing grant. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is that the amount is preset by EOPS and OGR based on your population. So we get a certain amount each year-
Okay.
-and it varies from community to community. So we actually get the highest amount on the North Shore, and it probably is due to the population.
Well, I'm glad to hear it's an annual grant, I appreciate the work that both you and the Police Department have done to attain it, and I-
Thank you.
-look forward to voting to accept.
And no match funding, so that's always good.
Thank you, Counselor. I would entertain a motion to approve Order 241.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that is approved, three to zero. We'll move on to Order, oh, I'm sorry, I called to order the Committee of the whole. Welcome, colleagues. Order 242, this is another grant. Do you want to introduce this one?
Yes. So this is Phase Two of a grant that the city received from the Municipal Broadband Institute Mass Tech Collaborative. The first phase of the grant was a charrette, I'm not sure if you recall that, about a year ago, a little over a year ago, some of our municipal employees participated in the charrette. At the senior center, there were workshops and we were broken into groups of three, and it was really the information, sort of planning, strategizing phase for the implementation grant, which we've now received. And the implementation grant is going to provide funding where we can purchase different things like devices and a pod, sort of a listening pod at the library. I think in the letter I wrote it, it details all the different things it'll be used for, upgrading the Parks and Rec website, so it has language access and some more functionality for like ADA purposes. And then the final thing that we were spending the money on was some devices for BEV CAM to partner with disadvantaged populations so that they can have access to a device, and also Wi-Fi cards. So those are some of the things that will be used with the funding. And our DEIB Director, Wongari Fahari, will be leading this project with several of our department heads.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Any questions, comments? Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve Order 242.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's approved, three to zero. Thank you. We'll take up Order 243, this is a grant for twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars from the Justice Assistant Grant for Mobile Radios for the Police Department. Ms. Barrett, anything to add on this one?
Yes, so this is a grant we get about every five years, it's called the JAG Grant, the Edward Byrne Memorial JAG Grant. I partnered with Captain Richie Russo on this grant to submit it. We had asked for a little bit more money, we got a little bit less, which is, just means a few less radios. I don't know if you've read any articles recently, not only in Massachusetts but across the country, but law enforcement is switching from analog to all-digital and encryption with radios. And some of the reasons for that are due to safety, and when people have scanners, they can hear when emergency personnel are called to sites. And sometimes these sites are flooded with different types of people, media and otherwise, that make response to an emergency situation a little bit more complicated. And so a lot of these are encrypting at least for thirty minutes to allow emergency personnel to respond to these situations, like an active shooter situation, which is very chaotic when it, you know, rolls out. And so Salem and Boston and other communities across the country have switched to this, and that's what these radios will be for. We have some already, but we need to finish the transition from the analog to the digital, so that's what that grant's for.
Very cool, thank you, Ms. Barrett. Questions, comments?
Just one, Mr. Chairman, thank you for that explanation, Ms. Barrett. Do you expect the grant will be sufficient to facilitate that transition, or do you expect the city will need to put up funding at some point in time to-
There is some funding coming for additional radios out of the Police Department budget. I believe it's about sixteen thousand dollars and change, I don't know the exact amount, but to make up for that, but that was budgeted in the police budget already.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would entertain a motion to approve Order 243.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, last one tonight is Order 244. Ms. Barrett, will you introduce this one?
Yes, I'll say a few words about it, and then I'll ask our Harbor Master, Peter Dickman, to come up and talk about it. This is probably one of the top three most exciting grants that I've been awarded in my eight years here. Peter Dickman, our Harbor Master, and David Caldwell, our Assistant Harbor Master and a scuba expert. And I worked on this grant together over several different sessions, I think every week or two weeks. I call it fun with grants. And you go from a lot of blank pages where you have to create narrative and you have to create a detailed line item budget, and you need letters of support, you need photos, there's a lot of different elements that you need. And it was just a pleasure working with this team, and I'm also a certified scuba diver, so I was very excited because there's going to be things going on with diving, and there's no match for this grant. This is federal funds that were given to the Virginia Institute for Marine Science, and they have all the funds in their coffers already, which is very exciting with what's going on at the federal government with uncertainty with grant and earmark funding. So that's a great thing, but I'll have Peter come up and talk about the details of the project, because it's really exciting, and I just think it was a huge win for us, so thank you.
Mr. Harbor Master, welcome.
Thank you. I am really excited about this project as well. It'll be a scuba-based derelict trap recovery, which Beverly Harbor is in need of. There was a recent watch change this past year that allows us to recover this derelict trap gear, which is known as ghost gear, because it continues to-
I didn't realize this was a problem, but it makes sense.
Yeah, it does.
So this funding will allow us to address that. We're modeling it after a recent project, last spring, the Center for the Coastal Studies of Provincetown did a project up here in Salem Sound, a small area between Misery and Baker's Island. They spent two days and they recovered one hundred and twenty derelict traps. They filled a dumpster, so it's a big problem, they can't do it in our inner harbor, so that's why we're using scuba divers, because of the rocky bottom and all the moorings. What they did out there is they grappled, they used hooks to capture it. The project will be done over a couple winters, so the recreational boaters, commercial fishermen should not be interrupted at all, most of the boats will be out of water. Like Catherine said, it's 100% funded, so no contribution to the city. Let me know if you have any questions, there's a lot of details to the project.
Colleagues, any questions?
Just a quick comment.
Madam President?
Not a question, as I was listening to you explain further about it, I was just realizing that over the summer I had occasion to be in Woods Hole, which is also a marine science sort of mecca, and I was watching a video that was talking about the dangers of ghost nets and ghost lines for marine wildlife. So as you've been explaining, I was just connecting some dots, and this does sound like a really exciting thing for us to be able to do.
I would like to add, there is a large educational component of it, because people are not aware, they look out over a picturesque harbor, and nobody knows what's on the bottom of the ocean.
Great.
So we are partnering with local organizations, Green Beverly, Salem Sound Coast Watch, Harbor Management Authority, so we're trying to get the word out as well.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, I would entertain a motion to approve Order 244.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that is approved. Thank you, Ms. Barrett, thank you, Harbor Master for being here. I think that's it for Finance and Property tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the Committee of the whole.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn the Committee on Finance and Property.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, everyone. We'll call the full Council back to order following that break for some subcommittee work, thank you to our subcommittees, and we'll go to reports from committee, Ms. Kent.
Order number 235, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding an appointment for Benjamin Roy, 12 Arlington Avenue, to serve on the zoning board of appeals. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow, recommend the Council approve this appointment, I was ahead of myself.
I know, for a minute I thought like, oh, I've forgotten something, I was like, no, we're not done.
I was still thinking about the conversation.
That's okay. Are there questions or comments on this one?
Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
That carries nine zero.
Yes, Counselor Tondo?
Oh, Counselor Tondo.
Madam President, I would like to motion to reconsider the vote.
All right, so there's a motion to reconsider, which would allow Benjamin Roy to be sworn in, should we vote to reconsider, to be sworn in without waiting for seventy-two hours, is that the thinking? Okay, thank you. Is there a second on the motion? All right, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Oh, sorry. I was saying, yes, sorry, I was going to say, and I usually do, with a motion to reconsider, if what we want to do is to be able to allow this member to join the zoning board of appeals without the waiting period, if you want that to happen, then you do not want to reconsider your vote. So Counselor, you're making this motion, I hope it fails.
Yes.
Great, okay. So we've got a motion and a second, all those in favor? All those opposed? All right, that fails zero-nine on the motion to reconsider, which would allow Benjamin Roy to be sworn in, to be able to join the next zoning board of appeals meeting, thank you. We were really on top of that one.
Order number 244, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred dollar grant from Nationwide Fishing Trap Removal Assessment and Prevention Program, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow, recommend the Council approve this request.
Are there questions or comments on this one? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
That carries nine zero.
Order 243, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollar justice assistant grant for mobile radios for the Police Department, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow, recommend the Council approve this request.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Carries nine zero.
Order number 238, Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding fiscal year 2026 proposed CPA budget, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow, recommend the Council approve this request.
Are there questions or comments on this one? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Carries nine zero.
Order 241, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, seventy-one cent municipal road safety grant, has been considered and beg leave to follow, recommend the Council approve this request.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the order, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
That carries nine zero, thank you.
Order number 242, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a eighty-five thousand dollar grant from the Municipal Broadband Institute Municipal Digital Equity Program, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow, recommend the Council approve this request.
Are there questions or comments on this one? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the order, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Carries nine zero.
Order number 233, the Committee on Public Services, to whom refer the matter regarding an appointment for Navia Hurricane, 3 Sunset Drive, to serve on the Commission on Disabilities, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow, recommend the Council approve this appointment.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
That carries nine zero.
Order 234, the Committee on Public Services, to whom refer the matter regarding an appointment for Allison Dudley, 7 Beckford Street, to serve on the Parks and Recreation Commission, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow, recommend the Council approve this appointment.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Carries nine zero.
Order 239, the Committee on Public Services, to whom refer the matter regarding petition 31133424 to install underground facilities on Hail Street, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow, recommend the petition be granted.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
That carries nine zero.
Order number 179, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a proposed revisions to our City Council rules, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow, recommend the Council approve this request with the amendments discussed.
All right, are there questions or comments? Counselor Bowen?
Yes, can I get a, I'm sorry, can I get a refresh on what amendments have been included? Do we have a draft somewhere?
I believe these are amendments that happened in subcommittee. I was going to say, Counselor Hausmann, you're Chair of Legal Affairs, do you want to offer us some background?
Yes, I believe we made-
Oh.
Hi, Tom. Your mic.
You're muted.
There we go. We made four or five changes, some of them were typographical in nature, there were a couple of language changes, and I think Solicitor Olmecson has the, has, I'm without currently the copy of the changes, so if I could prevail on you, Counsel President through her, to run through them briefly.
Solicitor, thank you very much.
So I'll just run through the changes that were just made in subcommittee, and then, of course, if there's- of course, if there's questions about any of the changes, I'm happy to answer those also. But the additional changes are in Rule 1, there was a errant leftover have, H-A-V-E, that needs to be redacted. So it will read, "Every member of the city council shall be notified by electronic mail, regular mail, or hand of the time and place of each meeting, and shall give their punctual attendance accordingly." That is not on. In Rule, what is now three, "The powers and duties of the council president shall be provided by Section 2.2 of the City Charter," as opposed to "shall be consistent with." So we changed "consistent with" to "provided by." In Rule 21, subsection four, there was a leftover gender-specific he, so that will be changed to the president. And in Rule 22, there's, I'm not sure what sentence it is. Let's see, one, two, looks like, I think it's the third sentence now. It says, "Every subcommittee to which any subject may be referred shall report thereon as soon as possible after full consideration thereof." The subcommittee recommended redacting as soon as possible. So every subcommittee to which any subject may be referred shall report thereon after full consideration. And then, in Rule 26, it currently reads, or with summer deck, "In the absence of the council president and the council vice president," currently reads, "The senior council president, the senior counselor present," sorry, "shall call the council to order and preside." Instead of senior counselor, the recommendation is to change that to longest consecutively serving counselor. Those were the additional changes recommended by the subcommittee.
Thank you, Solicitor. Are there questions or comments then on this order, including these amendments that just came from subcommittee? Councilor Bowen.
I'll admit, I'm still looking for the original order, because I didn't realize this was one we were going to be reporting out on tonight.
It was on June 2nd.
Yeah, I'm almost there. I just, it may take me a moment to read and try and remember if I had other questions.
Thank you, Councilor. Are there other comments or discussion at this point on this order?
While we are waiting a moment, these really are changes primarily for clarity. For example, changing the word senior, the word term senior could be interpreted more than one way, and so the purpose is really just to make clear what senior means, not the oldest senior, oldest counselor. But, for example, and, you know, the change of gender and so forth.
Thank you. And just for the sake of refreshing our memories, our collective memory, aside from these changes, the changes that we were looking at, some were to clean up gendered language, but the most substantive proposed change had to do with clarifying language around the passage of ordinances. And as counselors who have been on the council will recall, there's sort of long been this, not an inconsistency, but just a little bit of confusion between the charter and the council rules, and how many readings constitutes two readings and a second vote. And so, working with former Solicitor Williams and now Solicitor Oldmixon, that was the primary emphasis of this original filing. And then, there's these additional amendments that we just heard to clean up some of that other language. Am I capturing that?
Yes. If I may, just.
You may.
So, to that point, it's, the recommendation is to delete Rule 26, which would then eliminate the prohibition on the first vote on the night the matter is referred to a subcommittee. So it would, so now, the passing an ordinance requires three meetings. By deleting this Rule 26, it will only require two meetings.
Thank you. And again, I'll just help refresh our collective memory back to when I originally had worked on this with the Solicitor's Office. You know, often, it does not preclude us from taking longer with any proposed ordinance change if we want to have a longer time to discuss it. As counselors know, there's times where we are looking at ordinance change that would allow for, for example, a handicap parking space in front of a resident's home. And so, three meetings with them every other week when a resident is waiting for a change like that has often felt cumbersome, long, it keeps our residents waiting long. So clarifying and streamlining our understanding of that rule in our council rules felt like it would be beneficial for us as we operate, and also for our residents. Councilor Housman, you look like you're.
Shut it off.
Okay.
Council President, if I may, just point out one other change that isn't quite as significant, but just something to highlight. Rule 17, right now, as currently in effect, requires a vote absent recusal or excusal, and also notes that an abstention is recorded as a no vote, and the recommendation is to delete that rule, or delete that portion of the rule, so that it's either vote yes, no, or abstain.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion just for a five-minute recess. All those in favor? Thank you. We'll take a recess, and we'll be right back. I know. As we're gathering ourselves back from that recess, I know we're not quite all back yet, but I did want to just take a moment, I'll take a moment at this point, to thank some of our city staff who have been here with us this evening. We've heard their names sort of mentioned as they've been coming up to the podium. Sometimes I introduce everybody at the beginning, but I do just want to take a moment to say thank you to, of course, Mayor Cahill was here with us at the beginning, offering a quarterly update, and our sustainability project manager, Ibrahim Lopez Hernandez, was also here for that presentation. Thank you to both of them. Brian Illes, our city finance director, was here with us this evening. Catherine Barrett, our city grants director, as well. Beth Oldmixon, of course, our city solicitor, and Peter Dickman, our harbor master. And then, of course, we had, from the CPC, we had Derek Beckwith, still here with us. Thank you, Mr. Beckwith, for hanging in with us all evening. And Jean Delios was here with us as well. And so, thank you to everybody. Thank you also to Tim Flaherty and the members of the team from the Y, who also presented this evening on the McPherson Youth Center and some of the different programs and projects that they have going on. And we appreciate that very much. And thanks to everybody. We approved a number of appointments and reappointments this evening, and we so appreciate everyone who's been either willing to be appointed or reappointed to serve on one of our city boards and commissions. We certainly have many, and it takes lots of wonderful volunteers to make those work and to help make our city work. And so, we appreciate that. And particularly, we approved that appointment to the zoning board of appeals for Benjamin Roy, and appreciate that he's willing to step in and get right to work, jumping in on that body. So, thank you. So I think we are ready to close out any discussion and take a vote on this final order. This is the proposed changes to the council rules. Changes to council rules do take a two-thirds vote. I'll just remember, remind counselors. Are there any further questions or discussion on this? All right. So the question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order as amended in legal affairs this evening. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that carries nine zero, which is more than two-thirds, so that is in effect. Thank you very much. Are there any other reminders or announcements from members of the council this evening? Thank you. Ms. Kent is reminding us that early voting for the November 4th municipal election begins this Saturday, October 25th, at City Hall. What are the hours?
Nine to five.
Nine to five on Saturday.
And then, not Sunday, and then all week.
Not Sunday, and then all week at City Hall for early voting.
Business hours, yeah.
Thank you. Business hours for City Hall. Thank you. Councilor Tondo.
Yes, I just wanted to bring to the attention of the First Annual Fly-by-Five K. Since Commissioner Kyle Hatalik's in the room, I want to thank him and our airport commission, as well as Mary Parsons. But it's an event that's, hopefully, will be an annual event, which will be used towards the McPherson Center. This year will also be towards the Beverly Middle School PTO. So it's a great event. 8:30 is the fun run, who doesn't want to run on a runway? And then, the 5K will be at 9:00 AM. So hopefully, people will be there to join us.
Thank you very much, Councilor. Councilor Crowley, and then Councilor Spang.
Sure. I just wanted to let people know that on Saturday, we're going to have a culmination of all the work that's been done for our Pocket Parks and then Holcroft Park. So we're going to have, starting at 11 o'clock, the ribbon cuttings on Simon Street, for 14 Simon Street, that Pocket Park, and then we'll go to 34 Simon Street, and then end up at Holcroft for the ribbon cutting there. And we'll have a Fall Festival, pumpkins, pizza, and just have a nice afternoon. Everybody, please come.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you.
Councilor Spang.
Just wanted to remind everyone that downtown trick-or-treat is scheduled for this Thursday from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, and parts of Cabot Street will be closed with a rain date of next Thursday, the 30th, but hopefully, the weather holds.
Thank you very much, Councilor. Any other announcements or reminders from the council? I'll just remind us again that our next regular meeting of the city council is November 10th, that is the second Monday, at 7:00 PM. We did recess one public hearing to pick up at that time. That's the public hearing on the petition for National Grid for Underground Facilities on Talltree Drive. And we also, we will, very likely, as long as our honorary can come, we'll have a mayoral proclamation for a wonderful resident of our city who's been awarded a lifetime service award by the Girl Scouts. So stay tuned for that as well. So with that, and with our thanks to Kim in the BevCam booth for having us live all evening, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries unanimously. We're adjourned. Thank you. Good night, everyone.